Hello, hello. So we're live for the first time on our YouTube. I love Adalanto.com. Just hanging out. This part will hopefully get cut out. Um, once we do the, you know, the clips and things after it's all been recorded. So um, glad that one person is here. It's probably just me. We're getting it started that way. Um, let's see. I'm going to get us all set for the city council meeting. I'm going to share this live stream when it gets a little bit closer to city council meeting. I'm gonna put up a couple of signs behind me and um, you know, the Diana for Adalanto signs. And um, I'm just gonna start getting it ready. So this is our live stream for YouTube here. And this is our Facebook Live gonna happen here. So I will return. I'll be right back. How we doing over here? Oh, we still have one. I think it really is me. You guys, me. Okay, so grab some water and again, I will be right back. Good. For what? Huh? I'm being on the phone right now. For our city council meeting. Okay, you guys, I am working on it hard getting on this council meeting call. Let's see here. One, four, one, five, six, five, five, zero, 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 one. That's to be part of the meeting. So I'm going to send you a-
Enter your access code or meeting number followed by pound.
Our access code is one, four, six, two, seven, five, zero, eight, seven, zero.
Enter your attendee ID number followed by pound if you do not know your attendee number.
I just put star three because I don't know what the attendee number would be.
Brenda, I'm on.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. So I guess I'm on too.
Brenda, can you hear me?
I'll mute us.
I can, Mayor Protem, thank you.
Okay, and then I am going to download and share this little file with you today.
Okay, Mayor, we have everyone on line.
All right. Welcome everybody to our regular meeting for the Adalanto City Council, the Adalanto Public Finance Authority, the Adalanto Public Utility Authority, and the Adalanto Community Management Corporation, and the Subsessors Agency Board. Uh, today is September twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Meeting started here at seven oh three. Brenda, can you get us started with the roll call please?
Hey, Norma.
Yes, Your Honor. Counselor Camargo. Let me unmute Counselor Camargo. Counselor Camargo.
Present.
Counselor Evans.
Present.
Counselor Knett.
Present.
Mayor Protem Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Reyes.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, and uh, just like last council meeting, uh-
Thank you, Angelo.
Counselor woman Knett, would you leave an invitation and uh, Counselor Camargo, can you lead us in the flag salute please?
Thank you.
Oh, residents aren't allowed to do the invocation anymore.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening. Thank you, Heavenly Father. It's a beautiful day. We thank you for all the council members and our leaders of our city and our residents. We pray wisdom, Heavenly Fathers, we go forward making decisions on their behalf. Help us, Heavenly Father, to serve you in everything we do and say. In Jesus' name, amen.
And the flag salute.
Can we all stand please?
Oh, we have to stand, you guys. We're standing for this one.
My pleasure. Please just to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Yay, America.
City Attorney, close session report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Floyd Filcham, City Attorney. City Council met this evening in closed session on one item identified on the agenda as conference of legal counsel. Uh, the staff reported to counsel there was no final reportable action taken. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, City Manager, any additions or uh, sorry, any additions or additions to the agenda?
I can't put any-
I have none, Your Honor.
I can't put a picture.
Council, any future agenda items, uh, Councilwoman Evans?
No, thank you.
Racism is a health crisis, right?
We can get an update please on the Rancho Road with the uh, with-
Rancho Road is a big deal, you guys.
Hat phone please, I appreciate that. And also an update on the signal on Mojave and Bell Fire, please.
Uh, so noted. Thank you, sir.
So noted? Like, what does that mean? He wants an update?
I have none. Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem?
I have none, Mayor.
And uh, if we could have, I would like to add, um, another we have-
Hi, Miss Rosie.
In regards to uh, our future road.
Hi, Pedro.
Projects that we have going on. Um, I know our engineer are working very, very hard to uh, get those done. But if we could uh, have a presentation on uh, all the projects that we have here coming up in the next uh, two to three years that are going on in Adalanto. Um, with the road being done, you know, we are having a lot of residents reaching out.
I was on those roads today, you guys, in the old, and it was not okay. Nobody should have to drive down roads like that.
That would be great.
I've never lived in a city that had roads like this at all, ever, ever.
City Manager, any announcements important?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Your Honor, City Council staff, excuse me, members of the public. Um, on that same note, uh, Mayor Reyes, for the uh, past uh, couple of years, we have been aggressively implementing, implementing uh, capital improvements throughout the city. Clearly evident uh, by all the new roads. Uh, and the repaving of old roads that are going on.
They haven't repaved the right old roads.
Keep in mind that um, we have been able to accomplish a majority of this. It's been approximately uh, six million dollars of just capital improvement. And most of those resources uh, have come from grants.
Hi, my ladies. I'm glad you guys are friends now and you know each other, unless you knew each other before.
Dave Martinez and Brian Wolfe. Um, we have been very uh, millions of dollars for it. Uh, so, so thank you. About uh, a few years ago, I approached the Mojave Water Agency to see if there was, there was any way that um, we could and not have to depend on the city of Victorville to uh, sell us water. To grow here in the city, we can purchase more water in the two million dollars a year. And the growth is not gonna stop, continue um, penetration of this city. Um, and so I approached the Mojave Water Agency to discuss uh, any, any option. And received a, a call later um, from uh, Mr. Carl Coleman. Mr. Carl Coleman is one of the uh, municipal officials. That uh, there was a project on the books for many years, but uh, it was shelved. But because we approached him, the city of Adalanto approached him, he dusted off the books and brought them back out. And I'm pleased, uh, happy to announce that uh, that RQ project, which is what it's called. It's a waterline extension from the city of Victorville. We own a water tank out in that area.
This was what the million dollars that we undersold our public works buildings for.
At Adalanto.
This.
Uh, creating a cost savings team. This is uh-
You remember that, Tim?
A year.
The million dollars. We had to sell the public works building.
Ceremony, which I believe uh, Marcy Kirk has sent an invitation is uh, thirtieth at nine thirty in the morning onsite. There will be several dignitaries uh, from um, the water agency, Kirk. And um, as well. So this is uh, just demonstrates another win for the city. I will be providing a more thorough update on other projects. It's too premature to ask three more projects that are underway. Uh, and those projects, these are already projects, uh, more, more jobs being created. Glad you got an update. I haven't been further at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and uh, City Council announcement, Councilwoman Evans.
Um, I don't have any announcements, uh, more so a question for City Manager. Um, a few meetings ago, you told me that by this meeting, we would be on uh, a video software. I'm just wondering what the holdup is at this point.
I would have to agree.
Sure. Uh, Councilmember Evans, I've been informed that uh, we will be up at the next video will be announced within two weeks.
It took us how long?
Thank you.
Counselor Camargo.
Goodbye.
I have nothing else to say. Councilwoman.
Well, I am excited. As I drove through the city of Atlanta, which I normally do just about every other day, the economic development and the impact it's been happening on our streets and all the booming going on and all the uh, the excitement of people uh, expanding their businesses is exciting to me to see all this movement within our city.
Hi, Phil. Nice to meet you here.
I just wanted to know that. That was something for me to say. Um, myself and George, I'm glad my commissioner represented the city of Atlanta at the Fed Grow uh, presentation. Uh, it's a revolutionary way of tracking product by wave satellite by chip. And it's embedded within the chip, and it's embedded within, excuse me, the product itself. I met with Senator Lynch from Pennsylvania and also federal judge Stephen Smith from Marshallville State. And afterwards, we toured uh, Peter Corporation. On Friday the twenty-third, there's a spread coming up at seven AM. Uh, it will be our sixth, let's put it, our sixth drive to the food. Sure. And uh, we're excited about that. Of course, uh, masks are required. Uh, PSAs are going out every day, one minute, excuse me, one minute every hour. Uh, twenty-four, seven regarding this event, and we're excited about that. We're not sure how many more which people will receive to this, but I'm just walking through the high desert. Excuse me, it's smoke outside and something else. All right. Um, also, uh-
It's really atrocious, you guys.
California Councilman Brian, uh, Benny, who had a wonderful time and learning so much about how it is to be not, to be not sighted, but to really be able to hear and see things better than we can, those of us who have our sight. And uh, with that, turn it in. Thank you very much for letting me represent you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I have none, Mayor.
And uh, several meetings this week, teleconference meetings, had a great meeting with uh, the other mayors and uh, and our chairman of the county today, yeah, they reported uh, the, the numbers that have been going down, uh, council-related uh, child access and so forth, and they're looking at uh, potentially to let the state stone, but things have been announced to be healthy. Um, you know, and residents, we have, we have Purdue and we, we've uh, we had a weekend schedule and had a great meeting today with BRTech uh, in regards to them assisting us with uh, all the, with the two, you know, cleanups, the, the two different things that we've had typically a year. Um, and if we can find a way to, you know, utilize that. I believe City Manager said last meeting that we've uh, we, we've, we've continued and uh, made a connection with uh, High Desert Keepers to pick up our diggers since when I was first a couple of years back. And uh, we're moving forward on that, but great news in regards to uh, pick-up day um, in regards to cleaning up our city. So BRTech has uh, given, given us the confirmation that uh, they are committed to helping us with these cleanup days. Uh, whatever the, however they can.
Hi, Louis.
That we will receive anywhere from ten to fifteen of-
Hey, everybody.
Uh, to pick up all of the trash, to dispose it in time.
So he's talking about the trash cleanup.
Drop off. And uh, we will be able to drop it off. So we're looking forward, I mean, pretty much um, once we people High Desert Keepers on the locations and, and uh, and, and the volunteering, this is where we have to come together, the community, uh, Adalanto. The volunteering for this, this will probably have, if not every single weekend, um, two or three a month, depending on how many volunteers.
That's us, High Desert Keepers.
Um, to be able to get the-
We're trying to clean up this city really good, you guys.
You know, dropped off and picked up.
High Desert Keepers.
Ourself.
Is awesome.
Be able to come together and help High Desert Keepers in uh, in this cleaning, in this cleaning effort uh, to clean up our desert so that-
We've been pushing really, really hard. I've been pushing-
My manager, I've had a talk with the keepers and we're working on a schedule. This thing is gonna be a list of volunteers um, to be able to have something aggressive. Every single weekend, we're gonna have.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, Normie.
To be able to, you know, really impact and clean up our desert, so.
I hope you guys make that soon.
Um, of course, we're gonna need to practice, you know, we're gonna have to utilize the PPE.
And I'm gonna need your help on this one, you guys. So um, it's time for us to get together. Scott's gonna need like forty to fifty people and we really need to show up. So, everybody.
Super excited about that. Um, other meetings, a little bit premature.
Scott would be fine. He would be so happy to see you.
When uh, they're all says done, then we'll move on with our public comments here. Uh, open that up at seven seventeen, our public comments. If you wish to star three, then raise your hand. The City Clerk can either-
Public comments, you guys, so you can call in. The phone number, I posted it there. Let me-
Just a reminder, star three for public comments.
Get that there to you today. Anybody gonna be on public comments today?
I have speakers.
There is one speaker today.
Five, six, two, four, one, three. Go ahead, Speaker.
Hi, everybody. Council, Mayor. Um, good evening. It's Tanya Edwards. And I just wanted to, first off, say thank you so much to Council and our City Manager for getting the BVA, LPL um, contract signed for our animal control. Um, and I also heard we're gonna be doing a drop-in relief program. So that is just great news. That's good business for our city and um, pat yourself on the back.
Right, you could do that, Norma.
I have been uh, real diligent about staying uh, on top of keeping an eye out for refrigerators and uh, dangerous and safety issues, and you guys have done your part to pick up the trash and those refrigerators as they've been coming in, and I, I just wanted to say thank you for that as well. Um, that's teamwork and that's what we're all about, right? Uh, and next, I wanted to tell you guys a really cool story. Um, the CHAN, Community Action Health Network, who's been helping me feed, feed the seniors and veterans and our community. Well, we had seniors fill out applications that came through and fifteen of those seniors came through and filled out applications and qualified. And they were all given fifty dollars each to pay their brothers for gift cards. So we had some real big smiling seniors out there. That was a real big blessing. Um, and uh, on nine eleven, we fed um, close to eighty residents. And on nine fourteen, uh, we were sixty-eight, nine four, sorry, uh, sixty-eight residents and seniors. So it's been a um, busy month so far and a lot of good things are happening and that will definitely help with finding some uh, strong arms to help in the community to help and get that trash cleaned up. And I already have a lot of people who've asked, how can they be part of it? How can they get involved? And so um, just trying to um, get those people to come out. When you ask them, would you be able to keep gathering and then finding a way to keep in communication with those people because there are people who care about the city as well. They really do want to be involved. And um, I'll be there for the updates and uh, cold water and whatnot. But they, oh, give me a rake. I'll even help in that way. Anyhow, thank you for letting me share and um, good job on, and also um, the repaving. The repaving has been great. I've been out there quite a bit and a lot of good things are happening. Um, but I did want to say um, a little bit uh, just to keep an eye out for our, our men and women that's serving our PD that there's a lot of crazy stuff going on there that we make sure that we're constantly in prayer for them and letting them know how brave they are. You know, make sure if you see them in a restaurant- You know, make sure if you see them in a restaurant or somewhere, feed them, give them a, pick up their tab, you know? Have a hot coffee, stop by the police department, bring a box of donuts. But remember, these guys are working overtime and a lot of, and, and really going out of their way to do a lot of crazy things. So thank you for letting me share. Thank you. Mayor, I have no other public comments.
Oh, I guess maybe I could do it.
All right.
You have raised your hand to ask a question. Mayor, please wait.
Sorry, you guys. I'm just gonna say something nice, I guess.
Your line has been received.
Hi, my name is Diana Esmeralda and I'm a resident of Adalanto. I am just so glad that High Desert Keepers, uh, their operation has been able to finally, after about a year and a half, come in and start really helping. I'm really excited about it. Um, we have maps and all kinds of different things in different areas. And we really do need all of those residents to, um, join in with us and really work on starting to, uh, clean up our city a little bit more. Also, we do have a cleanup on Saturday. So, um, if you could get online and check out, um, the operation on Aster. It's gonna have like two dumps, 12 dumpsters and three pieces of heavy equipment. Um, so we need 40 to 50 people, uh, to come and take a big bite out of that elephant over there on Aster. We even called it the Aster Project. It's just a big deal. So I really thank you so much for letting us really take a chunk out of that toxic trash over there. And also, um, I had come up with this idea and I thought that it would be great, all of our monies that we are getting for disaster funds or that we're, um, giving to, you know, that we are holding for food drives and things like that. I think that we really need to explore the idea of grocery stores. Like pop-up grocery stores, and I'm probably not gonna have enough time for this comment, but pop-up grocery stores all over Adalanto where an Adalanto resident can go in, get their groceries with human dignity and, um, you know, maybe show their license and their or their proof of residence here in Adalanto and be able to pick the groceries that they need instead of food drives and things like that. Um, part of human dignity is making sure that people get, um, the food that they need. Uh, because some of us have food allergies and it's really important. Sometimes we get a box of food and we can't even eat half of it. So, um, let's think about maybe a different way that we can do food pop-ups within the interior of Adalanto, cause our walking score in many places is a zero. So we need, we don't have, you know, certain sidewalks, especially in the old. So we gotta get out there and maybe create some food pop-up grocery stores that, um, you know, are supplied by these food, uh, distribution companies. Thank you so much. I'm sure I'm over time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
I almost hung up. Don't do that, Diana. Don't hang up. Oh, is it because I'm not on speaker?
Yeah, at the point of one motion, I'm like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remember the audience. There's a question on this. Um, before I go for motion, would anybody like to remove anything? Councilmember Evans?
Yes, please. Can we remove the candidate's update receiving file?
Hi, Ms. Cynthia.
All right, well, I got, I got the allergy. Uh, no, thank you. I'm gonna connect.
I have one. Thank you, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim? I have nothing. All right, I was gonna pull off.
Hey Tank, what's up? You missed public comments.
Discussion, but, uh, that is that. Um, I'll motion a week. Thank you, Al. One second.
Hi, second. All right, Councilor Marco.
Yes.
Councilor Evans? Yes. Councilor Tanet? Yes. Sheriff Lieutenant Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Ray?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, on to new business, um, discussion. There are issues related to stank commenting, uh, fines for violations of mask-wearing order. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and, and, and see if you're okay with this. Um, if we can have the mayor, Pro Tim, put this item on, um, if we can have him start this off and then turn to you guys. Is that okay?
Uh, this is, this, this is Lloyd, city attorney. Um, yeah, that's perfectly fine. And just to give you a heads up that, uh, both Jesse, city manager, and I spoke with, um, the sheriff's department and the captain, and, um, I also spoke with county council.
Great, Sheriff Pro Tim.
You can join the meeting after that lifted miss you. You are now being elected to the meeting.
Just got. Um, by many, many different residents, um, including many seniors that, uh, we have had a lot of residents, um, going around the city not wearing masks. Um, the last complaint that I've received, uh, was from one of our seniors, um, who finally muddled up with enough courage for her to go out and, uh, go to Sator Brothers, like she was shopping. Um, there was an individual there who used to wear a mask indoors, um, which really, really terrified her. Um, I'd like to thank a few of the city staff, uh, who did use uh, that gentleman service we had in, uh, the room from before. Um, I've also have many, many issues and complaints. Uh, people throwing party in the front yard of their residence and out in the street with no, nobody wearing any type of mask. Um, I know if the county's numbers are going down, which is a lot better. Um, do have to take into consideration though that we're fairly coming out of the first wave of this. Uh, we have seen other countries like England and Israel have had a large spike in new cases, uh, because they're being paid with respect and way, because of the fact that we're going into, uh, fall and winter season, and we're gonna be providing food as well. Um, I think we need to take it upon ourselves, uh, to protect our
That's our mayor Pro Tim.
And our, you know, average population. Um, I would definitely ask, you know, for that sheriff's department to be willing to enforce this and to
That's your mayor Pro Tim. He's assistant mayor.
Should be afraid to, to go to store. None of our seniors should be afraid to step out of their home, simply because there's others that just don't care. Um, I, I feel we should all be held to the same standard. And we, we accept the knowledge to protect our city population.
You should all be held to the same standards, except you guys don't get a hundred and $20,000 ban.
All right, city attorney?
Lloyd, let me, um, sorry, yeah, please, please, sure. Lloyd. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Hernandez, uh, asked for this item to be on the agenda as a discussion item. Uh, please, we, we are, uh, very seriously. As Lloyd indicated, as Lloyd indicated, uh, this afternoon, sheriff captain, first city attorney, uh, the, uh, you know, and I were on several calls to sound. What options, what options, if any, do we have available to us? And so Lloyd had, uh, as he indicated, our city attorney had a, that conversation, uh, with county council to, to item. And I also had, uh, um, Lloyd, I'd like to kind of put this over on your lap right now, then maybe I can, I can just.
He's the one that had the conversation.
Um, and I think we, Jesse, do we have the captain on the phone, just in case there's any questions?
We do.
Okay, fantastic. All right, so, um, you know, there's no question that the law is clear that mask-wearing is, um,
So we're all calling in.
And
We have to call in. We don't get to go down to city hall.
We all know well by now and
Right.
Businesses and, and, you know, indoors and that sort of thing. I'm not gonna go through all the rules, but we, we know that mask-wearing is required in, um, situations. So there's no question that it's the law. So the question is, does it, um, how can the city get involved in enforcement of the law? Because city does not have its own police department. So, a couple of things that, um, we talked about are, um, that it isn't an issue that, um, first of all, the, the sheriff's department does enforce the law in certain situations. So when, uh, my understanding from talking with the county council is that when the sheriff is called by a business because, uh, a patron is being belligerent and won't, and, and is indoors and won't put on a mask, um, the sheriff might be called. And then they, they'll respond as best they can. Um, so there's, it, it, it's not true that the sheriff doesn't enforce it. There's no law and so then the state health and safety code as well as state penal code that, um, um, health orders by the state are enforced. Uh, in these situations, the, the sheriff will, um, um, respond as best he can. Um, some, the, the issue with the city adopting its own ordinance and, um, creates an issue of, well, the city has its own staff to enforce this. And if we ask the sheriff to enforce it, will they, will it be a top priority for them? Um, and these are things that are much more difficult for the city to
Hi, team.
An, an additional thing that county council, uh, reminded me of is that, um, if the city takes it upon itself to create an ordinance that makes it a, um, um, a misdemeanor or an infraction or whatever to, uh, a violation to not wear a mask. Then, um, it actually shifts the, the cost burden of litigation, if litigation is due. Now, as a practical matter, these things are typically handled by an officer politely asking the patron to put on a mask, and it usually ends right there. Um, the, the, I, as I understand it, these are very rare situations where it becomes a, um, a more involved, um, enforcement. But if the city, with the, the county council reminded me of
Hi Jenny, nice to see you.
To enforce actually a city law, uh, and an ordinance. And if it does go to litigation in the future, again, very rare situation. Then actually, um, the city's dime, it's the, the cost burden involved to the city to enforce its own enforcement. So that just makes it a little trickier situation where, um, you can imagine that, uh, that's just according to the city's agreement with the county sheriff. And it's the way of, uh, the sheriff not being overburdened with, uh, too many ordinance that the city might pass. So, um, that's just a little nuance there, but in terms of city enforcing its own, you know, I think that becomes a staffing issue. Uh, it's possible for, it's technically allowed for a, uh, code enforcement staff to enforce a city ordinance. Uh, but then it, it raises so many other issues, uh, whether they're properly trained to handle the situation and whether we have sufficient staff. So it just caught, it, it raises a lot of issues that, um, uh, the concern that I'm trying to, uh,
Hi Pedro.
Jesse, you weren't at anything?
Sure, thank you very much for that explanation. It's, the county CDC, what it boiled down to was that, uh, the spikes are no longer there. They're senior reductions cases. And, uh, stores and, um, other public private facilities are beginning to, um, put in. And, um, what I was told by any, they're just gonna write it out. And, um, and then see how these play out with they too, the county, um, are not enforcing this corporate areas that they resource. Financial and, and, so, just wanted to, to have that, Lloyd.
And let me just remind us, remind the council that, that this is Lloyd, a city attorney. That the item is purely a
Oh, great. So I'm telling people all kinds of crazy stuff right now.
Is needed. This is an opportunity for there to be public comments and for the council to, uh, discuss it and if they wish to give action, um, but, uh, nothing is required. Merely an opportunity to talk it over. I have nothing.
All right, um, Councilwoman Evans.
I have nothing at the moment. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Marco. Um, at the moment, I think no, I think I'm fine. I think it was said, I mean, it, it, it's a law, it's a requirement. It's something that, uh, CDC again requires. Our sheriff's department will enforce. I'm comfortable with how, how it stands now. But that's all I have, sir. All right, Councilwoman Dan.
I personally, uh, wear a mask whenever I go out. I know in Walmart, they won't let you in without one. Or I don't know about Sator Brothers, I don't go there too often. But, um, I think it's a great idea, but without enforcement, I don't know what we can do. Maybe, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, you can give us, what you think there on that line.
Other cities took their money and actually bought masks and things for their residents.
We're talking about, we don't have the staff. But don't we contact sheriff in particular city?
What is he talking about?
Our, what, 75% of our budget. So they are our staff.
75% of our budget goes to sheriff, everyone. 75%.
You protect the residents of this city. Well, I don't wanna hear that sheriff's department is
They were all out in the old today, just hanging out in neighborhoods of people who don't even have enough money to make mischief.
And to protect the county, our city manager, and we're just gonna write this out? How did that go on the first wave? 200,000 dead.
He didn't wear his mask at the meeting and he was sick.
How, how did that, how did writing that one go out? How did that work out? We have more dead in this country than any other country in the entire world. Why? Because of the failure of the county, of this state, and of this, that, or the if they would have did what this council did and closed up early. When everybody was saying, oh, there goes Adalanto, they're being overdramatic, again, they're, they're
Again, this is your mayor Pro Tim. The one that got sick with COVID. Who didn't wear a mask at the meeting and he was sick. Yes, that guy.
Early while we started first, first, who was the first to get released? We were. First, first, who was the first to get released? We were. Why are cases lower than anyone else to gun for that same reason?
Yeah, I know.
But now we're cases are very starting to go down. And now we think we can just open everything up and everyone can be teaching. And, uh, everyone will be able to smell the flowers.
What is he so angry about? I'm just not exactly sure.
Why we are in the mess we're currently in.
We're in a mess, but we're the best? You got to pick one, bro.
We don't pick the best in order to protect our health and the end, to protect our state. Those numbers are just going to go up and up and up and, but we're going to be on the body left and right. Thank you both for.
We are a hotspot.
I'll call it out, man.
All right. Thank you. Um. This is a discussion item. Um, Brenda, I heard Lloyd, uh, I heard Lloyd made mention of this opening public comments.
That's my apologies. I didn't put the public comments on there.
Hi, Adrian.
Um, on another item, we had discussion. We didn't have public comments. Um, I'm happy to have public comments.
All right. That's, sure, seven two one is that.
All right.
You have raised your hand until you have a question. Please wait to see until the host calls on you.
Hello, counsel.
Go ahead.
Hello, counsel. This is B. I got.
Mr. Lee.
Maybe, maybe y'all can ask my question. So this is the B about writing a proposal for following the guidance under the tab, you know, dummy, or writing a proposal for the city of Atlanta to possibly find people not wearing a mask. That's my question. But I kind of, so who, what, what, what purpose of it? But I, I know the gist of it is trying to see who we going to follow or y'all proposing to write a new charter or something, the new amendment law or something to do it strictly in Atlanta about finding not wearing a mask. Their pro tell, man, I emphasize that you, man, I just came back there. Their folks say, I think, wearing a mask. Oh, really? They don't care anything why open. Go to Mexico. Can't go to their casinos unless you got a Mexico ID. Go to the river destination. They should deliver it. Are you part of that village? You can't even get on that village without being a part of that, a part of that tribe over there in Mexico. So they take me serious over there, you know, and they say, oh, our policies, but the United States things wouldn't shut down. And they should put lies to the people. The whole world economy is based off of America. America never shut down like Italy, like China and a lot of other countries. They lied to what they did. It was a war between they got, they about a million of us dying. And okay, we look up, nineteen eighty-four, call, they, uh, files over each other and hit me. It'll tell you the same thing. They can't shut it down. So posing and shutting people down in Atlanta, y'all probably just take a ride over to the bingo hall. But I can't get any more than ten people in the bingo hall than I can tell you, say, counsel, from here to, since you been doing, ten people in the bingo hall. Way too many people down here.
Bingo hall.
Down from Seattle to Atlanta, no, certainly not many people. That's, that's from Orlando. Yeah, so I'm sure you know Atlanta. You know what I'm saying? I'm out of the discussion. That's it. That's all I got to say. But hey, try to be forward. How they gonna pay the thing got a job? Hey, like, anybody in Atlanta got a job?
Thank you. Next caller, nine oh nine six three three. All right, caller.
Hello, my name is Tricky Hernandez and I am an Adalanto city resident. As we all know, uh, masks help to protect yourself as well as help protect other people. In many cases, you may not feel like that you are contagious until it's too late. Um, very recently, we had an Adalanto city employee that had tested positive for COVID-19. During this time, I was at city hall, um, at the same time, uh, prior to the city employee informing city hall of their testing positive for COVID-19. I had my own personal business that I was attending to. And I may or may not interact with this employee. I don't know. However, I do know that when I found out on the news about this employee testing positive, I was terrified of writing out because of the, of the how, um, family, my family has already been done with my COVID-19 before. During the fourteen days, uh, my husband and I waited yet again to see if we had contracted COVID-19. I checked it fine due to my exposure to that city employee. Fourteen days later, we were both okay, uh, not having any signs of symptoms for the COVID-19. But I take this into the fact that while I was at city hall, I had my mask on and I protected myself at all times. Uh, I understand, uh, it's a tremendous responsibility to consider people in this community that have disabilities, medical conditions, um, and are victims of assault. And I have my own reasons why against that is a trigger for myself. However, I do know that it does help protecting from contracting COVID-19. However, it, it is still each of your responsibility as a council member to try and protect as many Adalanto residents as possible. As a council, you've already done that early in March when we, uh, were, we declared the state of emergency.
Has it been three minutes yet, you guys? Has she been on for three minutes?
Everything did, but you guys jumped on that as soon as possible and, you know, we had no test results because of that. Being comfortable, a quote unquote, writing out this COVID-19 decline is not the best.
So we have three times as many, Tim says.
And further protection with installing a mask mandate when it does.
I just posted the GEO outbreak for you.
Thank you. Next caller, five six two four one three. Got her.
Hi there, Tommy Edwards again. I also was, uh, there and notified about this, uh, city employee that had a very slight and mild case of, uh, COVID-19.
And that's true.
Um, which we are seeing that mostly it is all running its way out. And I agree, I'm letting it out. If you are in high risk, then I agree with wearing a mask and stay home and have everything delivered to you. And, uh, just live in, within your walls if you're home and don't leave the house. Um, but you know what? I'm a business owner and I have to survive and I have to leave the house. And we have to get on with the world and we cannot stay in this paranoia mindset. If you, uh, are, you know, wear gloves, uh, wash your hands often, do all those things, put a mandate. We're tailing this and it's not going to go away. It's going to run its course and it's getting milder. And I really, you know, would hope by speaking to many nurse friends and doctors that we are heading out of this. And I think we need to quit with the paranoia. And we need to remember what our police do here. I think you're forgetting that we have, uh, domestic violence. You know how many officers it takes for a domestic violence call? All three.
All three.
Accident.
All three. But they're getting seventy-five percent of our budget, so.
It goes on and on and on. I know that.
Today, they were just driving around neighborhoods. You saw it.
Be, uh, available at all times for you, but that's just not possible for our city. Let's remember that our police are out there doing quite a bit. And if you're.
COVID is real.
What they do, maybe you need to do some ride alongs again.
COVID is real.
Remember what our police officers do. The things that they deal with, the things that they see, the people that they're going, and to worry about if they're wearing a mask or not. Right now, they're just trying to not get shot at.
That's not true.
To check and serve.
That's not true.
If you're concerned about it, then get a.
That's Tanya. That's Tanya Edwards.
Give them, uh, papers and, and have them remind them to wear a mask. I don't know. Like a school, a school commute, a school, uh, bandwagon of people that goes out and they're the police stoppers. I don't know. I'm not trying to make fun, but you know what? We, we're coming to this tail end. Let's not be paranoid. Let's not lose our minds here. This is a city. The city has to get back to business and I thank everybody in the city for doing their part. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller, seven six zero two one seven.
That's more laws.
Hi, my name is Diana Esmeralda and I'm a resident of Adalanto. So, um, I think that maybe we could strike some kind of medium ground here. Um, yes, we should all be wearing masks when we leave our homes, when we're out in public, um, when we enter a store. But at the same time, we have to understand that, um, people are being thrown out of their homes. They have lost their jobs. Um, there are other issues that are underlying here where people can't get to a store because they, the walking score here in Adalanto is zero. A thousand people a day are still dying from COVID. And also Adalanto has become a hotspot because of GEO. So, um, a lot of the funds that we have, like three hundred and some odd thousand dollars, it did not go to the people. It did not go to the masks. It went to a van. And so now we are here, oh, it went to, um, city attorney fees and planning department got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then, you know, cannabis enforcement got fifty thousand dollars or something like that. So, you know, there is a money management issue here that the city has that it hasn't been helping its residents appropriately through COVID-19. And, um, I would request that, you know, maybe we explore the idea of the disaster council or committee again. You know, appoint the treasurer and do all of those things. Maybe, you know, just try over again and put together our disaster committee appropriately. So, um, there's forms that were already made for this, you know, we had. Anyways, I think that we should look at this a little bit differently and understand that we've mismanaged our money and not appropriately supported our residents. And that's one of the reasons why this is happening. Thank you so much. I'm done.
Thank you.
Your line is the newest.
That's all I have.
I don't know how else to say it, you guys.
Uh, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to, down to woman Evan.
You can join the meeting after I was committed.
You know, when we met, I said to you that with the amount of money that we pay the sheriff, we should have some sort of say in how they conduct business. Unfortunately, in their contract, there is a clause that says we have absolutely no say in how they conduct business. So I think that's something we need to look at before we get into the next contract with them. And I, I believe we have a whole ton of years left on the ones that we're in. It's definitely something for, if it's the same council city here, how many years from now, or a new council, that we need to remember that that clause inside of that contract ties our hands in being able to see what we want them to do and not to do. You know, I was nothing to wear body cameras, unfortunately.
Yes.
The sheriff has decided he's not going to do that.
That's true.
Feel like it's, it's a important thing to do. Not a, I believe they said it wasn't financially, uh, beneficial or something like that.
But they make so much off of us.
Unfortunately, again, the clause in the contract that we have with the sheriff.
You're welcome, Ms. Rosie.
Give us authority to tell them how to do their job. So, um, I feel you. I understand what you're saying. I think that's that if cities, counties, states, that force rules, laws, ordinances, whatever they may be, sheriff of counties should not be allowed to say they're not going to enforce the laws. Uh, but again, it goes back to contracting. And if the folks that hold the big contract, which is the county, choose not to force the sheriff of that county to do what they want us to do or what the state is mandating us to do, it kind of ties our hands as it moves down the chain to the city council. Thank you so much.
Council member Camargo.
Yes, this is one of the city managers, city attorney. Now, if this is enforceable.
Yes, on body cams.
The regulations, the requirements, it's a law of an establishment for the call for support. At that point, our local sheriff's department would assist. Is that correct or incorrect?
This is, this is Lloyd, Philson City Attorney. That is my understanding. That is correct. It is a law. And if a call, if a call was made to the sheriff, uh, department, then they would do their best to respond. Now, I don't know about their, uh, what their priorities are. But yes, they do respond to violations of the law. And maybe that'll be a good question for the captain. But, um, they, they do enforce the law.
That's my understanding. So this whole discussion is true or there? Well, our sheriff's department would enforce it and if they're called out to enforce it. I believe, yes. Um, if we ever reported a, as council or the public captain, if you want to walk out, or not if, when you walk out, put your face mask. If you go to an establishment, put your face mask, face mask. Ninety-nine point nine? Not a one hundred percent. The establishment already has, uh, has a sign saying cannot enter the facility unless you have your face mask.
But if you're walking five miles from the old to the grocery store and you forget your mask and you're hungry, you might not be able to deal, you know?
Mayor, hi, ma'am. Just, um, I agree with you, Ed, um, council member Camargo on that. The, the problem, or, or not really the problem, but what I see happening when the, the sheriffs are called out, they're not being called out to ask for the, put the mask on. They're being called out to ask the person to leave the establishment. So it's, it's more of, it's not a, uh, enforcing the mask law at that point. It's enforcing the, um, what is the, you know, if you think, if I, I have the right to review service situation, whatever that law is, right? So I don't know that that's actually enforcing the mask law in the way that, uh, you and Hernandez is, is bringing it up. What they're doing at that point is you come into my business. I don't want you here without a mask on and I want you to leave and you're not refusing to leave. So they're coming in to rectify that situation, not specifically telling the person to put a mask on or I'm going to cite people because they're not wearing a mask.
I tend to agree with you on that, but I think, well, this has to, this has to tap because I mean, if, if being a business owner, I can refuse certain, because of my establishment, without a mask, I'm going to refuse their service, uh, servicing, please leave. If you don't want to leave, I'll call in my sheriff's department. And they have to leave. Now, at that point, that, a discretion of the sheriff's department per se, if, okay, this all started with you're not reading the law, you're just citation. I think that's pretty much the report.
Hey, good evening. This is the captain. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, in, in what you're saying, council member Camargo, is, um, is pretty accurate. Um, the sheriff's department has never said that we will not, um, enforce our policy in, um, with the department and with the county on, um, the best way to kind of handle these situations right now is we have taken a practice of asking for voluntary, um, compliance. Um, we would give reports of any violations, um, regarding the public health orders. And, um, so we have gotten a few phone calls, um, from businesses where they have asked someone to leave, um.
Oh, yeah. What would the sheriff like to happen?
Saying, hey, we would like them to leave. And we have asked them to leave and, and they have done so. Um, and, uh, so that, that's generally what we've had to, uh, respond to to date. If a public service comes in, we always do our best to respond to that call as quickly as we can, based on the priorities that we have, and then respond to, um, the situation at hand.
That is the sheriff, uh, the head sheriff, the captain of the Adalanto Sheriff Department.
Lloyd, this is my associate. I have a quick question. I don't know if you can answer this or if the captain can answer it. What are penalties observed more by the state mandate if someone refuses to wear a mask even after a police officer has asked them to put it on?
You want to start arresting people because they don't have a mask or what?
Um, because my understanding is that.
It's really not appropriate.
Yeah, it would be, uh, for failure to, uh, obey the public order would be a misdemeanor.
Just fill up the jail. Hi, Let. Nice to meet you here.
Fine or what?
It's not a fine.
It's not a fine. It would be a citation, but it would refer them to criminal court. The report would be forwarded to the district attorney's office for the district attorney to review and decide if they were going to file criminal charges against someone.
So there is no fine associated?
There is not a fine that's associated criminally, no. I, I'm sorry, I'll correct that for you. Uh, misdemeanors do sometimes have a fine that would be attached.
We are wearing masks and sidearm. I am all the time.
At the time that they go through a criminal proceeding. Usually for a misdemeanor, there's an option of a certain amount of time in jail.
Sorry, I did a lot of walking and stuff today.
I'll just add to that, which is Lloyd. Um, if the city adopted an ordinance, uh, imposing a fine, that would not be a criminal matter, that would be an administrative fine. Um, then we get into the issue of, um, uh, that I described that the county council reminded me of, which is if sheriff is enforcing it and issuing a, a citation pursuant to a city ordinance with, with a fine, then the cost of bringing that before a judge would all be on the city.
That's a lot of administrative cost.
I'm sorry?
I have no further questions.
All right, Brenda, there is a resident that raised her hand, right?
Yes, there is somebody that raised their hand.
Okay.
All right, caller seven zero five five three. And councilmembers, if you're not talking, you may want to mute yourself. That helps with the background noise. Hello?
Go ahead, caller. Good evening. This is Elizabeth Cove, registered nurse.
Hi, Elizabeth.
Forty-year veteran, ICU ER OR. I have served in every major pandemic for the past forty years. Have caught many of those very diseases myself and survived them quite well, as you can see. I would like to tell you that if you're between zero and nineteen years old, your chances of surviving COVID, as of the CDC.gov website thirteen hours ago, is a ninety-nine point ninety-nine point seven percent chance. Between twenty and forty-nine, it's a ninety-nine point eight percent chance.
It's not the point, you know, like.
Ninety-nine point five percent chance. And if you're over seventy, you have a ninety-four per, ninety-four point six percent chance of surviving COVID.
Look, what was this dude's story? Like, this senior is all upset about. I've seen kids that don't have a mask but are, have to go into the store to get food, like, I don't know exactly. We need to think about this a little bit differently. Because it's not.
Science is not settled on masks. Now, a man that did not have these lockdowns or regulations is approaching her to me and they have one third less cases.
She sounds like a Trumper, like she's got her Trump stuff down.
Death rate is what we need to focus on, not whether you have.
Yeah, I feel like we're not asking the right questions or we're not having the right discussion here. I think there needs to be a little bit more nailed down in this discussion as to what needs to happen or what is.
Nobody is bringing up, the elephant in the room is the Constitution of the United States. No one has the right to tell me what to put in or upon my body.
And no one has the right to tell us what to do with our bodies. So she must be for abortion then also.
What my particular reasons are for telling you that I don't wear a mask.
My body, my choice.
And I will not wear a mask. You can find me as much as you want. You can jail me if you want. I will not wear a mask.
So there you go.
I have a legion of people behind me that are willing to litigate this. Now, Pennsylvania State Courts have already declared it unconstitutional. If you're going.
We don't know what she's talking about, Ms. Elizabeth. Oh, three, three minutes are up.
Okay, mayor.
All right, um.
This is what I do. Sorry, you guys, it's so in my house. It's here, but.
This is the hard one. This is the end of close to home, you know, uh, with Mayor Pro Tem, um, and industry, I'm getting everyone else. City manager, I know that we did, uh, an order of PPE, uh, mask, gloves, hand sanitizer and so forth. Can we get a, a status update in regards to when we would be receiving all of that?
Absolutely, you are. Um, took the notes down here a while ago.
Notes, guys. Everybody can grow.
So, Mayor and, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, as indicated earlier in the conversation, we were the first to initiate, uh, any type of questioning steps in the state of California. And, uh, that would not have been what it ended, um, with your support. Since then, we have, uh, purchased a pallet of hand sanitizers or hand sanitizers.
Yes, used for our health.
Throughout the city, upstairs and downstairs, various areas, uh, for both the public and our staff. We have deployed a, uh, sanitizer for our staff as well as members of the public should they come in and, um, like to cleanse their, their hands. We also purchased, uh, and we received donations of several thousands of masks, protective mask, um, various sources. We purchased and also had some received as a donation. We also purchased, uh, what is known to be an automated temperature screening kit. So when the public walks into our city hall and we're ready to reopen, anything to do is be identified to this automated temperature screening kit. You put your face right, um, up close. Technology and it reads your temperature and it either says you're clear to walk in or it, uh, states a warning. And if you're wearing a face mask, it will also tell you that you're not wearing a mask and that you need to unmask. Um, we've also, uh, with this, uh, cost savings to the city, um, um, asked our public works department and, and, uh, you know, um, manager for that department did a fantastic job in, uh, installing very heavy duty plexiglass, uh, with, uh, iron hardware throughout the city, uh, upstairs and downstairs. And, uh.
You're welcome, Ms. Janet. I'm so glad that you're here watching.
So, so we've, um, we've taken, uh, drastic measures and steps and gone above and beyond to, to look out for the best interest of our, our constituents as well as our employees. Of course, there's never a guarantee, you know, we, we.
So there you go.
Constantly vigilant.
We are supposed to be wearing masks right now.
That, um, have emphasized to all of our employees that if they're not feeling well, to please immediately contact their supervisors, request to go home and check in with their, uh, doctors to, to be examined. Um, and not return, if positive, if not return, not return back to the city if cleared by a medical physician. Uh, in addition to that, we, um, also recently, um, mandated that all of our employees that are going to leave their workstations, for example, if the water department downstairs who have us, they have the option to wear the face mask or just rely on the plexiglass that's right in front of them. However, however, if they decide to get up from their workstation and come upstairs to finance department or to come and see me, then they're required to wear a mask to and from a work area to every area they're traveling to city walls. So I know it does not, um, bring relief to the life of mayor and members of his council. Um, I'm a, I'm a problem solver. I make things happen. I don't wait for anything to happen.
Profile says.
This is one of those issues that, uh, really breaks my heart. I'm not able to.
I'm a problem solver. That's what my stuff says.
I always do. So I wish I could do more. Um, and I don't know what that is yet.
Hi, Ms. Cheryl.
I'll figure it out.
Good to see you here.
So that's a brief update, Mayor.
I got that. Bring me a problem. Yo, I'll solve it.
And a bunch of gloves and a bunch of masks. Uh, can we, you know, let any resident who feels the need be able to come to the city hall and, and grab that, grab that stuff, that PPE that's needed, um, for that, uh, if we can do something like that or if we can, you know, um, give them the mask, give them the glove, give them the hand sanitizers. Uh, I'm not sure what type of legal issues, but that may, that may hard, uh, but what can we do? Kind of, of this, right? Like, how can we be, um.
Need to be providing PPE to the people. Like, three or four hundred thousand dollars. We don't have a disaster committee. We need to go back to listening to me about the disaster committee and enact that with a treasurer so that everybody knows where the money's going.
Registered here who wants to find, find, find a typer in stores or, or PPE or mask or any of that for. And.
But he wants to find them. So why fund them?
Find PPE or find food. You know what I mean? So those are all things that would be taken into consideration.
All of a sudden, he's flipped on his own script. That's not appropriate, you guys. You've got to, like, stick with something, okay? He's the one who brought this and now he's arguing against it.
You know, Lloyd, maybe this is for you, you know, find out what type of, um, legal ramifications with any of the tools we would be in. Um, if we, you know, were to get our residents, you know, mask, glove, if what's hand sanitizer, like, come to, to pick up that, that stuff, you know, um, I think that would end this up to, for, to our residents.
I understand. This, this is Lloyd. I understand. I will look at that.
There we go. Working for you guys, trying to get your PPE.
No, no, go ahead. He, he asked you a question. I'm sorry.
Hand sanitizer and soap.
We very appreciate, uh, the fact that, um, you'd like to, uh, provide our residents with, uh, some of this protected gear if they don't have. Um, we're more than glad to post something, uh, on our Facebook page, uh, or our.
Take back the van and give us our money back.
Mr. Dave Martens is also working on some additional gear. And if Dave's on the line, um, can you cover a little more of what we've been working on behind the scenes to, to bring in some additional, uh, gear?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, Jesse, this is, uh, Dave.
Trying to think about the email.
I've been listening to the conversation and, uh, in addition, I'd just like to add that, um, recently the county river side had, uh, ten million masks and they provided fifty thousand dollars to each city. San Bernardino County is also in receipt of several million masks and their plan is to donate those masks to the cities so we can give those away. Um, the city is going to work with San Bernardino County to receive about, uh, between ten and twenty thousand masks. Those masks were intended to be given away. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we have currently about forty thousand.
All of a sudden, they have masks to give away?
Or PPE, um, the care.
Yes, he is.
That we can utilize for, uh, PPE, not only for the staff, but also for the public. And staff is working on a plan to utilize that to assist with the purchase of masks and gloves and sanitizers, uh, so we can also utilize that, uh, when we're doing other city functions, uh, what they might be and when there's groups of people, uh, either, you know, attending virtually or at different meetings that we're trying to have, where we can pass those, uh, items out also to the public. Uh, and that's it for now, but if you have any questions, I'll send it to the council.
Mayor, I may. Thank you. Um, so maybe I missed it or I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm confused.
A little bit. But I thought that the forty thousand that, that was voted on for PPE was specifically for residents. And then I remember city manager talking about this, these pallets of, um, hand sanitizer and such a while ago. I also was under the impression that that's just for residents. So how do we ensure, I mean, if we're going to spend forty thousand dollars on PPE and correct me, maybe I didn't understand. I, I was under the assumption that all of that money was going to PPE for the residents. And so maybe if you guys can help me understand how that's not the case and why we haven't already ordered that. And, and second, I, I agree with the mayor. We need to figure out a way to get that stuff out to the residents. I don't know that, that I like the idea of having the ones that want to come, come, because what we may have is the masks that show up on day one and then we give them all away and then the rest of the residents don't get them because we didn't ration them right or whatever. I think you need to figure out a way where each resident takes what they're entitled to unless maybe they opt out. I don't know how, I don't know how we can do that, but, um, it definitely has to be a system and I think that, I, I, Dave, I appreciate you saying that staff is already working on it. I think we need to make sure that's clear because the, the first half of this section of conversation had been very uneasy in thinking that we weren't already planning for that. We might, again, it was my assumption, because I don't think anybody ever said clearly, um, forty thousand dollars for PPE was that it was going directly to help residents.
Mr. Mayor, it's Dave again, if I may. While we, staff, in the presentation, we indicated that that money would be utilized both for staff and the public. And we indicated that there was a limited amount.
Yes, I will. Hi, Gary.
Majority would be going to the public. And, uh, um, we also.
This is the craziest, right?
When the public come in, come in to visit and they're not wearing, you have to provide them to the public when they come in for meetings or to get permits or to pay their water bill. So, and yet staff is working on, uh, programs to pass those out. Um, and those have not been completed yet and, um, this money, uh, the care faculty, we just started receiving it, I think, uh, just a few weeks ago. But we're working on that and our.
Why hasn't it been given out to the people or, we need a meeting?
Awesome. Thank you, Dave. And if you can just include in your plan some sort of system to ensure the folks that can't physically get to city hall to pick them up, that they are also, um, thought about and we figure out a way to give them their, their equipment as well.
Yeah, of course.
All right, council, anything else? If not, we're going to go ahead and, uh, begin on with our next question. Uh, this is number two. Consider issues related to implementation of buying illegal dumping of animals and illegal dumping of trash. and illegal dumping of trash. Please, Councilwoman Jeanette, block this item up. Councilwoman Jeanette, want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you very much. Hello. Can you hear me all right? Can you hear me all right? Yes, yes, Councilwoman. Thank you for that. Thank you. It's, to me, it's outrageous, the trash and everything that I've been seeing on the roads and that. Behind apartment houses off of Lambert, down dirt roads, even across from the senior center, one of the dirt roads. It's just appalling to me. There must be, and there should be, in my opinion, a fine for those that are caught, and they have to be caught with evidence of dumping. I know Commissioner Kerry Hernandez, I mean, excuse me, Kerry Delgado, excuse me. He actually caught somebody dumping, and he made him put it back in his truck and left. People have got pictures of it. Of course, nothing was ever done about that. But it also actually caught, as you all know, someone dumping off two puppies. That was, what, two, three weeks ago? And something has to be done about this, and I'm not sure what to do, but there ought to be a fine. I would say maybe a thousand dollars. And half of that money should go to some nonprofit in our city to help, and the other half would go to the city to help them. But this is outrageous, absolutely outrageous, all the trash and that. It's just appalling. Some of these streets are quite dumb. I was just up here off of Belfort and the Chaparral yesterday, and there was a new apartment owner there, I was told, and I started inquiring about all this. They just don't care, and the stuff was out in the street, and the other sides were very nice. So something has to be done, but what's the use for making regulations and stipulations if we're not going to enforce or if code enforcement? Our code enforcement needs to be out there enforcing the regulations and stipulations that we make. Without it, they're useless, and that's about all I have to say.
All right, city attorney? Thank you, Your Honor, Lloyd Gilcham, City Attorney. Well, we do have a animal control title of the municipal code.
A title of the municipal code.
And we do have a, it is what the counselor, Jeanette, is describing is a violation. I will read that exactly. It's unlawful for any person to dispose of the body of a dead animal without proper authorization from, other than on his own property. And in this municipal code, it does provide for administrative fines. So of course, it does require.
It should be a gazillion dollars. I agree with you.
It should be citation. So that's a huge problem right there. And the first violation under the code is one hundred dollars. So I think that is something that might be amended, but if that exists.
Your mommy.
And then we also have general nuisance law in the municipal code that does. Do it as well. But I imagine that this is probably kind of like what we were describing with the map squaring of this enforcement. We're open to, if you'd like to give direction for us to, for, maybe we could have our staff talk to other cities to maybe deal with the same sorts of problems and get ideas of what other cities are doing. If you'd like that kind of direction, we'll keep pursuing.
Thank you. I was checking with other cities as well, and the minimum is a thousand dollars. And it's not dead animals are dropping on the road. You're dropping live animals. I've not seen them drop a dead animal, but I've seen them drop live animals.
I see. Mine is taken. I'm so sorry. And I misunderstood. I thought we were talking about dead animals.
No, not at all.
Okay, well then, a different issue and a different part of the code, and then we're getting into.
Animal cruelty.
Cruelty to animals, which there are criminal laws about.
Yes, there are.
So you're talking about, I see, I guess I was confused by the word dumping, so, okay.
Hi, Ms. Pam. Nice to meet you today.
You specifically wanted to look into fines for, you're really, it's really a ban to.
Well, that sounds nice, but they're literally dumping them in yards and in dirt roads and everywhere they can. And it's horrible, because these animals don't deserve that.
No, I completely agree. So, okay, I apologize. I was confused.
Oh, no, you're fine. That's fine.
Now, I see what you're talking about, and I know that there are cruelty to animals. So we can look at whether other cities are.
Yes, we, we.
I think, I think what we really need to look at, how are we going to enforce it? Because we have lives and things that have been made, given six years that I've been between a commissioner and a counselor, that are not being enforced. I want to know how we're going to enforce these things. Do we need additional people just for code enforcement, not only just for the animals, or for other problems that we have that have stipulations to them or fines and so forth? We need to look at this, because what's the use of having this muscle if we're not using it? It's got to be stricter. Our city could look beautiful again. I've been here several years, as you know, and it always looked very nice. And right now, when I was out on the street yesterday, I never see, oh, graffiti. My goodness sakes, white on fences in neighborhoods, big old letters. We have to get out to this stuff. We can't have it. It looks like a ghetto.
Mayor, Councilwoman Nick Mary.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, Jesse, City Manager. I want you to know that we have a very, very responsive, amazing team, and I'm appropriate to be public works department when it comes to response time.
So I just uploaded an emergency plan the state created for us in times of disaster.
When it comes to my attention, I can tell you that they're very responsive. They get to the site in a very timely manner. We have a code enforcement department and an animal control department up to the. And they're both cross-trained. They're both code enforcement, and they're both animal control officers. And so they have a list of priorities that they work on throughout the day as this two-man crew. But when we get a call from either a council member or a resident, they respond to it. At least when it comes to my level, it's immediately.
I agree with that. I know that is true. I know that is true.
It's, thank you. It's awful. It's awful and disgusting that the dumping of animals, whether they're alive or dead in our desert, is inhumane. I'm almost certain that everyone on this council dies, a dog, a cat, or some other sort of animal. And the listeners as well, and we all love animals and we love these pets. But I can assure you that.
Thank you, Hector. Thank you so much. It's so good to see you here. I miss you bunches, bro.
A moment ago, they're both animal control certified as well.
Good night, Rosie. Have a good night.
And we'll come up with a plan to be a little more aggressive to address these concerns that you have.
We also, Jesse, also I noticed today that there's more graffiti over the skate park. They just took it off. Our coworkers took it off, the old stuff, and it's up there again. So as we recorded in.
Awesome.
It's wonderful the way you do respond.
I'm glad.
I just wonder if we shouldn't have.
There were like three or four couches where I was at today.
Another job to do that would, you know, oversee this project, because about five weeks ago, I had nine cats, and I just have one cat inside. She's fourteen years old. But nine cats put over my front fence. I don't know if they think that this is a feeding bin here or what, but there was three adults and the rest were kittens. And we're still trying to find homes for them, or, but we're feeding them and trying to find homes, and then the last ones were taken out to the pound. Thank you very much. They appreciate, and I appreciate the rapid response I do get from calling you. I appreciate it.
All right, Councilwoman Evans?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilwoman McMartin?
Let's see, would I start with this person? I'll start with the comment with the graffiti. City manager, I just want to thank you just because you are correct. When we call in for this, it's within, sometimes within fifteen or thirty minutes, it's taken care of. The problem is, the decision to that call is that.
Councilmember McMartin, you're sounding like you're far away.
Okay, this is better?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, my allergy, I apologize. Hopefully you heard as far as the fact that I thanked the manager for taking care of this graffiti within sometimes fifteen or thirty minutes. I know I've called once every two weeks. By the time I come back around for a report, voila, it's gone. So for that, I appreciate it. I think the problem is, a lot of times, us, and I think us as residents, think because we see the trash, we see the graffiti, that the city automatically has the responsibility or the ability to go on its premises and its private property. It's county property.
Not all of it, and we cannot.
That we can't go there and pick up that trash. So I just feel a little agitated, and I believe it just bothers with the trash in our city. I get it, just the dump that we have, but the city's only doing so much. At the moment, we step on a private property, you touch my brush, my bush, whatever it may be, now I'm going to sue you. It just stinks, but that's the fact. So as a city, I thank you for being able to clean up within our city streets. In addition, third point is, Councilwoman Georgia, I totally agree with you. I think we've got to up the fee, but I think if it's within code enforcement, I don't think you should go to a nonprofit or what have you. Keep it within the code enforcement for better training, better technique, better equipment, whatever that might be. But in addition to the thousand, I mean, it's not, if you give me a hundred dollars, it ain't going to hurt me. Like, I'm going to pay you a hundred, it's going to cost me three hundred to go to Big to Go Dump. For my, my, I'll take the hundred dollars. But when you hit it where it hurts.
We already paid a thousand dollars.
A thousand or fifteen hundred, because now, let's make sure that we get the assistance from our residents with the PTE. Make it fifteen hundred. If you tip me off, if you've got a license plate, if you have pictures, there's five hundred to help, and we're able to commit them. My only issue with that, though, unless this is Lloyd or city manager, I might be wrong, but in the past, if I have pictures, that's not sufficient enough. They have to be caught in the act by code enforcement or our sheriff's department. But I think if I got a picture of somebody dumping there, and I got ten photos, license plate, picture vehicle.
Why aren't they enforced? Why didn't she hand that over to code enforcement, like she's supposed to? She just says, oh, Joy just says, that's all we can do. Of course, they're not going to be fined or enforced.
But I've heard that in the past, many, many, many years ago, that just not getting done. But Councilwoman Georgia, I do believe that we got to up it a little bit.
Councilman Ed McMartin, what would you think of our, of course, of for those who, like you said, we did, for those who terminated and have the required documentation, of course, that they get a reward? Because people are going to want to earn money, and people will start policing, start policing their own streets.
Definitely. I mean, I got one rip, maybe six hundred feet away from me, that is just a goal. It's always trash, but it's private property. But again, Lloyd or city manager, is a picture sufficient enough, or we got code compliance?
Yeah, Amber used to do it.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But that's sufficient enough if we have actual footage.
Just wait. I'll let code enforcement describe their experience, but I'm expecting that it's going to depend on how good of a photograph it is.
So Keith, before you come on, Keith, this is Jesse, City Manager. Mayor, councilmember, is she okay? If I can respond to some of the comments, please?
No, please.
Okay, thanks. A while ago, I had a meeting with the water department, and any water bills, every little bit helps. So we're hitting it from all angles. In the water bill was a section, and.
That's my dog.
I asked the water department to utilize that. It was being used for the census in the beginning, and I think we're beyond that now, if I'm not mistaken. I guess councilmember Evans could give a brief update on that. But my understanding is that now, with that being behind us, I've asked the water department to put in that water bill, for instance, water bill, a warning, a warning that talks about illegal dumping. And it currently says a thousand dollars, although that's not our fine. I'm in agreement with that, but that was the decision that I made. I didn't want to put a hundred dollars in there. Because as you mentioned a moment ago, councilwoman McMartin, we just smirked at it. So there is that being implemented in the water bills as we speak, and I hope that we figure out a way to up the fine to a thousand, possibly twenty-five, ten thousand, whatever that magic number is. The higher the better, of course. So we're tactfully being nice about it and threatening those individuals that to lose life before they go out dumping illegally in our desert. That's one approach. We're also going to be implementing on our website awareness of this illegal dumping and the ramifications. I know that Keith is on the line, and we talked extensively about this with our city clerk, as well as Keith, this afternoon. Keith, is there anything you want to add to the questions we've asked?
At this time, as far as the pictures of being added to any case or claim, the individual actually gave nothing to testify with us. Well, I think for, definitely like to personally, any other legal counsel that wants to make sure he's able to provide information out there or want to make sure you know what they did, what they need to do. But yeah, we can definitely.
City manager, I have a little more statement. You know, we don't need to be nice to these people. These people are causing a health problem to our city. One of the things that I saw, and some of the things are outrageous. You know, not only garbage, but all kinds of things that get contaminated. We don't need to be nice to these people. We need to let them know we're not going to put up with this stuff anymore.
Thank you. In addition to that, city manager, I think we got to bring that as a resolution to up the ante to that magnitude of fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. But definitely input the reward for a week too. And if at all possible, again, if those photos are supportive, that would be great to put that in there. But I just really want the public to understand that it's not the council, the deluding, the trash, the debris, the city manager is not. It's really understand, it's private property. And it's hard to really, to know what is and what isn't. But please, it's, we're not doing anything with the cleanup. We are, but we cannot walk from private property. If you try to do the law that says we can, but all these police.
What?
To us, it shows that we can. But I know if I have private property, they know what it's about. And yes, unfortunately, I do agree, a lot of these property owners are out of town, are out of the country. And yes, unfortunately, I do agree, a lot of these property owners are out of town or out of the country. They don't see it on a daily basis. I'm just, who is in there? Hmm, maybe the measure R might work out this. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, city manager, I'm saying, if I may, um, what can we do to these people that it is, uh, on her private property, like this, uh, huge graffiti I saw yesterday and all that? I mean, the letters must be, they're pretty tall all across his fence, right there in the middle of a, the housing area. I mean, what can we do with the city? Can you give warnings? What can you do?
Absolutely.
Because we can't go on their property. We can't paint their fence.
That, that is correct. Absolutely. We, we always do something. Again, again, we're, we're very responsive. If any of you allow us, correct?
But what can we do? What, what, I, what can we do? What's our realm to do?
Sure. Thank you, uh, councilmember Janet. So as mentioned earlier, we're very responsive. As, as, as you mentioned to us, are we made aware of it or would we find out to? For example, courses driving around, they see something. By the way, I was joining a drive along, drive along with, uh, Paulino, the, uh, manager for Public Works Department and, uh, I look at, uh, some of the new projects I, uh, say, and, uh, he stopped and immediately contacted and recognized what he was looking at. He saw some graffiti and he immediately contacted, uh, one of dressed right away. We, we can fight the property owner. Um, and, uh, at the same time, we can go there and paint over it and send a bill to the owner.
I thought we couldn't get on their property or, or go on their property. I mean, it's a city.
Code enforcement. Yeah.
Oh, wonderful. I'll get those addresses tomorrow.
Just remember, there's big profit. Um, I like, I wrote a little bit about measure R. Absolutely right, uh, councilman Carr, this measure R, if passed, will be addressing a lot of these issues that we've been facing in this twenty five. I always use that magic number because that's could have been longer than that, but I can always look forward as I. So measure R is definitely going to be, uh, very important here. Um, another note that I'd like to make is we attended, uh, Mayor Reyes and, um, Mayor Pro Tem Hernandez and I attended, I, well, I believe all the East and Long Beach, something like that. And I know the mayor, um, caught his attention and they caught the vice mayor's attention as well. And it was a booth with a gentleman who had implemented cameras throughout the city. Uh, not, don't recall what city it was, but, uh, it, it was something that, um, we obviously but, um,
All of a sudden, we can afford it now?
The team that, uh, we've brought on board, Dave Martinez. He's been very instrumental in securing grand dollars. So Dave, I want to kind of put that on your lap. We can talk about it first till tomorrow morning and see if there are any grand dollars out there for us to go out and purchase these cameras. Um, I'm not sure how much they cost, but I know that they, they were not within our range. I checked with our finance department at the time, but, uh, you know, we're very, very strapped for cash right now. Um, November third, that should pretty much, uh, help us get out of the mess that, uh, we inherited. But the cameras, uh, mayor, if you recall, uh, this, these are cameras and vice mayor, please chime in, uh, are cameras that, uh, you found very enticing and helpful to the city. Uh, it could, uh, take license plate numbers, it could identify facial identification with very, very high resolution cameras. So that's something we can look into. Um, and that's all I have.
Yeah, if I do remember that, uh, these cameras also had night vision, so they had very clear video even at nighttime. Um, I believe the price tag on there was seven grand.
Oh, my God, seven grand a piece?
That time was way out of our budget fund. It would be a tremendous, tremendous investment for our city to, to purchase the eighty equipment like that, most definitely.
Now, absolutely, the cameras were amazing and, uh, it's a great investment, uh, depending on how much cop reputation we can give out in regards to, uh, to measure R and how we can resolve some of these major issues.
How did this segue into measure R and buying cameras?
As well, and in this process, um, you know, I know that we have these cleanup days and dump days and unfortunately, um, I don't think that, I, I think the finding and changing the, most definitely, it brings forth resolutions for a thousand dollar fine or a fifteen hundred dollar fine, even with dumping caught. Um, I think if it's staff and the city attorney, if he has to work on that and bring that for the council, it's, uh, it's quickly sponsored.
No, no.
Hopefully we're on stretch, you know, uh, when I try to throw Oliver eight.
We're registered to access.
But our R will still, she does bring a lot of, to a lot of issues that other lump of residents really do see at the corner. And, uh, illegal dumping has always been one that, because Southern California has struggled with illegal dumping for, for decades. Um, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Senator Love may have mentioned in the meeting that, uh, the city of Palmdale or Lancaster actually has a resolution that their city hasn't had. So I mean, we can reach out to, to, um, you know, what, what it is that they did and, and what's right that they want about it. I think that would be great to be able to reference the implement. But, um, let's, you know, let's come together in the community, you know, we're gonna be doing these heavy stick dump days. Um, what about this council, uh, moving forward, you know, I, I love the, the dump, you know, the, the city dump day that we have at the stadium. But sometimes, you know, those lines are, no, not sometimes, all the time, those lines are rather long. Um, and sometimes people end up leaving because they weren't expecting to be in line for two, three, four hours to dump a, a load. Um, what if we divided our city into like four zones, right? And we talked with Vertex and we were to do, you know, many dump days, right? Of course, we still have two big ones, um, but we were to do two more in the year, like, so maybe like one a quarter, two big ones.
What do you guys think?
And then two smaller.
You're all on here. I can see you.
Residents who could go to these four zones and, uh, all their fun, right? Uh, like on the north side, let's say, Bellflower East, uh, to, uh, Air Expressway or to Rancho is one zone, you know, Rancho, uh, West is, uh, uh, Bellflower is another zone. And then, you know, divided into four sections where we were to do smaller dump days where, yeah, it would be a little bit more spread out, but hopefully we can, you know, give a little bit more opportunity to our residents to be able to go and actually, you know, dump their trash in those areas throughout the year. I think implementing a, a hefty fine would be a great, um, a great scare tactic, if you can say. But the issue still remains that we need staff. We need to be able to hire and bring in more code enforcement. So, um, until, you know, June of next year, I, I would assume, right? Or maybe January when we do our mid-year, uh, review, but, um, you know, we would have to wait for that. We would hire more people. So yes, that's the reason we need the staff to be able to enforce the fine and so, um, but let's, let's find a way, so we can, right now, to be able to, um, get them in the position.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'd like to direct the city staff to come back if the next meeting was a solution as to the amount that the fine would be and present it to the council.
She can't make a resolution when we're in the middle of discussion. That's us.
All right. Caller, seven six zero two one, go ahead.
Uh, this is Lee, council.
Hi, Mr. Lee.
Free is, member pro temp, council queen, evidence, council in the house. Uh, Coach, you break my heart. Made me feel good at all a couple weeks ago, but I still love you, Coach. And you don't need a law, you just need a way around the law, Coach, for this to happen. You don't need a law to say you can go on their property. You need a way around it. The lawyers stayed to tell you that since you knew everything and shot it shots. Uh, KKK lady, I feel you. I'm appalled about them doing the animals too, let me tell you. Just the part you're about to keep in that basement, I've been talking about the history of that KKK that you got in that club. But I'm glad y'all asked my question with the cap. I feel it. But my thing is, what's the percentage, question, what's the percentage of the people dumping actually from Atlanta versus those dumping that are not from Atlanta? And when it comes to finding, could we say we find the citizens of Atlanta, a thousand dollar minimum? And go up, and those be, be from right Atlanta, based on their ID, start at twenty-five hundred. Because if you do a study.
He's a smart guy.
Some of the people dumping that's not from Atlanta.
Right.
I don't care what zone you got, man. People gonna still come from Victorville and other places that dumped in the city. So that's a, gotta, gotta need to know how many people from the city is actually dumping and those that's coming into the city and dumping. So that, that, that right there is a, is a problem that, that doesn't get solved. And we just find everybody a thousand, but, you know, we hit my high citizens, but we got these from Victorville just dumping all your law, waiting on the zones, dumped up for free. So we should probably hit those that are not from Victor, uh, from Atlanta, hire it, start with our people at a thousand. KKK lady, they really need to stop doing that with them dogs. And I refer to you, because you changed their name as KKK lady. And that's all I got to say. But yes, now cameras gonna be your best way to do it, though. But then, Coach, all you gotta do is find people for, uh, trespassing on private property. You ain't even gotta give them the dump, just make, make trespass a thousand dollars. You needed that tag, Russell? Oh, you drove on private property. That's trespass, a thousand dollars, nobody, you didn't throw them in the mail. You ain't even gotta, you ain't even gotta go to their house if you do it like that. I mean, America would have figured out the, uh, misuse of money from the carryback. So we should ask them a thousand dollars from that to upgrade the system that already is, to upgrade the other users that you already demoed, but you just buy the camera. Cause if you bought Mac, you found what kind you got, and you bought five, that's ten vans right there. So that's the camera system. Cause they bought what, fourteen hundred brand new and spend the hard, you got it through fifty-six and up, so American bikes, yeah, you can run it up to twenty-two hundred dollars. Trust me, I know. Hey, I got the first computer for us. We got a, a hard M P.
Next caller, seven six zero two one, seven, your line has been muted.
Hello, my name is Diana Esmeralda and I'm a resident of Adelanto. I just want to say that, um, cameras are really great. Um, the whole problem is, is are we putting seven thousand dollars on, you know, cameras on county property or private property? Um, also, seven thousand dollars, that's about a good three months to have someone work a short-term time. And if we partnered with E D D and they helped us with our, um, our salaries for people to help clean up, that would be awesome. We could probably stretch that out to about six months each person. So, um, seven thousand dollars plus funds from E D D, if we could get them, would be three to six months for a person in their neighborhood, in their city to start helping clean up around there and get paid for it. So, um, I think that, you know, maybe cameras are cool, but also I would use them more towards, um, employing people in our city, helping them get back up on their feet and also cleaning up our city. And then I would think also about the animals, um, our code enforcement officers and and, um, animal control have been dwindling over the years. And now this is the reason why we're seeing such a big problem. I ended up with a guinea pig on my birthday because someone dropped it off at the park. So, um, we just have to think about, you know, maybe people aren't able to have the services that they need that are required for our city to have, um, in order to make good decisions for their pets or, uh, you know, whatever the case may be, there needs to be more outreach. We also have the Adelanto Bulletin, which is our newspaper here. Excuse my dog in the background. Um, and we could be using the Adelanto Bulletin more instead of our water bill and making sure that those newspapers are E D D M to every door at, in our city. Um, signs, we could be using signs at these ingresses and where people would go to dump, you know, the most popular spots or even on our street corners. We have a sign company in our city that makes street signs. So maybe we could ask them to help us create signs that reflect what we are saying here in this meeting, you know? Um, cameras might be in use, even that, you know, what the fine is, how to dump, maybe, you know, this is the number to the dump. Don't do it here because we're watching you and it's gonna be this much money. So, um,
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Your line has been muted.
Next caller, six two six three seven seven. Go ahead. Hello? Hello?
Hi, this is Margaret Travis. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mag. Good evening, I'm there, city councilman, everyone listening in. Um, I have an idea with the, uh, videos a little overdue.
But, uh, I don't know, can we also throw in something like, uh, uh, having them do some community cleanup when they, uh, get fined, if they've done it a second or third time? That be enclosed?
That's a good one.
Do some painting where there are other graffiti. Another thing with graffiti is that, uh, I hope that when they catch these people.
You can join the meeting after.
For the, uh, actual.
Maybe connect the meeting.
Because you might see that drawing in three other different places. And that would probably tell you that that same individual was the one that, uh, put that graffiti out there. A lot of them like to put, uh, kind of like a secret code signature. And, uh, this way, you know, we.
We will find them and make them take art classes and clean up trash.
Uh, and of course, the nice thing.
No graffiti.
Uh, you're gonna see animals roaming around that, uh, code enforcement be able to catch. And, uh, I don't know, I feel too like there'd be safety involved too, uh, having those videos, but, uh, main thing is that the graffiti does cause a lot of problems and the, uh, trash.
Your own structure.
It depreciates the value of, uh, our properties. And of course, we're trying to get people out here, uh, buy homes and, uh, you know, start business. And they look at these things, trash, graffiti and animals roaming around and, uh, they just pack up and leave. So I'm, I'm for this video. It'll pay for itself once we start catching people and finding them. But like I said, I hope they have to throw in some little community service to make them remember what they did and.
Community service is a good idea. I like that a lot.
Appreciate any property, whether it's private government, et cetera.
Right.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Yay, thank you, Ms. Magdalena. Step in the corner there, my paintbrush is.
Mayor, that's all I have. Oh, sorry, Mayor, one, one more.
One more.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Tracy Pergados, Adalanta City resident. I guess, uh, I think it's amazing that, uh, the city now is working with a high degree groupers. I have seen them on Facebook posting, um, all the different cleanup projects that they have and, and it's amazing that we're reaching out with them to help keep our city clean. And then we have, uh, possibly measure R to come in and help with that.
That's not what we're talking about.
Possibly increasing the illegal dumping time as well. Um, but it's, we can always do more. I mean, I've heard suggestions like with the cameras from earlier, um, I, I was looking at the city of Victorville's website, um, which they, in, within their code enforcement department page, they actually have an illegal dumping page. Um, and from what I was reading on it, uh, it says that, um, you are able to use your cell phone for your property.
I got kicked off.
To record, report suspicious dumping activity, uh, possibly that's something that, uh, or is that something that we would be able to implement on our city's code enforcement page for something that, that kind of attention for residents when they see, um, people doing the illegal dumping as, uh, councilmember Jeanette had mentioned with, uh, committee. Councilmember Jeanette had mentioned with, uh, Commissioner Gilgato, how he caught that person. If, if there's something that we can implement, um, to report that, that we're more proactive in, in keeping our city clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor. I believe that's the last one.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm gonna bring it back to Council. Councilman.
Uh, nothing, thank you.
I know it was a lot said, uh, City Manager and Legal Counsel, but this is brought back to us, just to state what the stamp, which you want private property.
I got kicked off, guys.
Uh, totals are acceptable at third fight. And I didn't catch the caller's name, but.
Sorry, I got kicked off.
As far as community service cleanup, if they're caught. So it's brought back to us, let's officially focus on the fourth thing. Thank you.
So noted, uh, Councilman Camargo. May I add something perspective, Mayor? Uh, sure. I'll be brief, I'll be very, very brief. So thank you, uh, Your Honor and members of the council. So the county, the state, and the federal government have a large category, uh. And when we go out and look for these specific grants.
Oh, I forgot to say what I really wanted to say.
Read it, there's a grant. So for example, if we go out and, uh, start searching for a grant that, uh, will assist the city in purchasing permits, that grant can only keep. With that grant. Not hire more staff with that grant. We cannot, uh, you know, divert from the rules that are set for us.
But we can't buy a hundred and twenty thousand dollar vans.
So I, I just wanted to, to make sure that Mayor and members of the council, you had an understanding, brief understanding that as much as I wish we could divert some of those funds to, uh, to earmark them for other things, we would be in violation and fined and are denied the grant. And we would have to end up paying it back. So they are specific. And when we get these grants, it's no impact to the general fund. Meaning that the taxpayers of this city that, uh, pay their taxes here at, at the city of Adelanto, it has no impact to our general fund. And besides, we, we have very limited resources in our general fund. We wouldn't be able to buy them anyways, personally or ourselves, the city and our fund. I have, Mayor.
All right, uh, Mayor.
Well, it's exciting to see the, uh, residents getting involved in all this, like, great statements from all of you. And, um, I'm excited about this, Miss Hope, because as we move forward, making our city beautiful together, we all have to get this accomplished. So thank you, everyone. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, what's him?
Hi, Councilman. Yeah, I just wanna, um, piggyback off of Lee, I think he was studying, um, great catch in regards to finding those, uh, people out of, out of Adelanto. And, uh, even if higher, uh, higher speed for illegal dumping, um, I don't think that, that, that's. Um, you know, it could be leniency in regards, um, the trespassing.
Hi, everybody. You're making it over here now. I don't know, I got kicked right off for some reason.
Should have been in the racism whatsoever.
Relax, Mama, relax.
What's your take on that, Councilwoman Evans?
Yeah, I don't know anything and I agree that all lives should matter. Unfortunately, for the past four hundred plus years, Black Lives and other people of color have had to deal with injustice and inequity. So, the issue right now is about the, the group of people that are being, that are having to deal with the injustice action. So, yeah, of course, all lives should matter, but until blacks are just as enraged with the mistreatment of Black folks, then all lives don't matter. And so, yeah, yeah, the goal is to make it, set up all lives do matter. But as long as the statistics stay the same and the, the social justice, the, the healthcare, um, the education system are all unjust to people of color, then we can't in good faith say all lives matter. We can definitely say all lives should matter. But until they do, that's a false statement.
But then, wouldn't that fall in racism? And of course, this resolution, just finds that in itself. I mean, if we're gonna get a death death, then let's get this get what we've all been, uh, labeled as minority, like you're brown. But then, I'd be raised by victim every more. I think it should, it, it shouldn't just specify the color of an individual, I just think it should be the lives of an individual. I mean, my ancestors experienced it, my grandparents probably, uh, experienced it. And let's talk about Native Americans, I mean, it, it could be abroad. So, as I'm in support of this, I just think maybe we can reinforce that against Section One, uh, item C. I, I, I don't know, I, I, I think, I believe that racism does exist, but it, I mean, it, it, it just, that's wrong. I mean, can I, can I take the white folk into a black community state, but they're not gonna be, uh, uh, sterilized? Well, slightly, there will be. That's just the one issue I have on that one there, uh. And, and, and again, I, I think because of what the last, really, the, the, the last four months has really brought this oppression upon a color, I think it's probably making an issue just that one, I think it's everywhere. I, I don't, other Councilman Evans, I don't want to think that, I don't believe it, because that's always like, like, just, it has to be broad. Uh, second, if the legal counsel can maybe define or what it's meant by Section One,
Hi, Gracie.
Um, item B, condensed police violence. Uh, at what stage is that a matter of opinion on the violence? Uh, again, broad, so that across all races. Um, I'm not a professional identity, I, I, I'm not, I'm not a, 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 a legal authority, illegal, uh, uh, the law enforcement officer. So, what does that define there? Because I, I can think of it one way, they might think about it another way. But what does that define condensed police violence?
Um, this is Lloyd Pilchun, City Attorney. Um, so I understand, uh, what you're saying. Um, and that one went, went right past me because it looks, I read it as that it's the implication is condemned unjustified police violence.
Yes.
That's how I just read that immediately in my mind. So, it did not occur to me that, uh, that it wasn't clear. Um, but I, I change your point. So, if there's concerns about that on the, um, um, I then, um,
Yeah, so that, I, I think so, just because it's a matter of opinion, it's part of itself. It being, uh, when the alias that, uh, uh, trying to, uh, be accountable for that. But what is that? That can, yeah, that, that word can be, I mean, if I, if I get, uh,
Watching my own video on X, again?
Following the direction of a, of a law enforcement. At that point, it has to be, uh, situation and that, if I'm that situation, then that has to be me. So, I, I, I totally, that, the words should be a little bit different. That's my opinion. Uh, what else did I have here? Yeah, I think, um, I have a little note here, again, but it, 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 it shouldn't describe just black. I think it should, it should, the word all. Because, yeah, are we gonna come with a resolution for, um, Native Americans that next week, or from now, we're gonna come for Latino, Hispanic, Mexican, Native American, uh, changing, uh,
Trying to get on with this.
It, it, it just, I'm doing, because it should just say as all. That's all, I have heard, thank you.
Lloyd, this is Chancy City Manager, if I may. I think what Councilman Camargo is asking for to bring this item back, of course, is to do so, uh, by amending the language. Okay, if I'm wrong, Councilman Camargo, is that what you're asking?
Just amend language to people of color.
Well, sir, yes. Councilwoman Evans?
Well, as all of you know, I have kids from
Oh, no.
All kinds of, uh, races, uh, that I've had the privilege of raising them.
There are all those kids anyways.
How do you feel about this, what would you say? And I'm really agreeing with, uh, Councilman Camargo, this needs to be a broader spectrum of language. I'm just about wondering, like, my little Japanese son said, what about us, Mom? Or, uh, my, uh,
Thank you, Irene.
Chinese little guy said, what about us, Mom? And I said, you're all very important, every one of you is important, and everyone has, needs a social life and a good life. And, um, I would agree with Councilman Camargo, we need to change the language in that. So, this doesn't reflect, uh, beautiful, uh, Black sisters and brothers, which I do really love. I have a lot of them in my family, and a lot of dudes, and a lot of friends. But, uh, they would also agree with what you told me, that it should be, everyone should be included in this. And for us to come back also with a better language to include everyone, I mean, Irish, German, French, God knows.
No, what is she talking about?
And, um, you know, I would think that it would be repulsive for me to come back and say, I want you to give the Irish, you know, special recognition, because it's always, most of us are mixed, I don't know, a lot of you may not be, but most of us are, uh, have multiple kinds of backgrounds that some of us don't even know all of it. But I would say that all lives matter, and certainly our Black friends, they all matter, I live dearly. So, I would ask you to bring this back with, with the language changed to include all, thank you.
No, uh, no.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I see, I have one issue, and it's with the verbiage. Um, the, exactly what Councilman Camargo said, the condemning of police violence, but, um, for me, I think that statement encompasses all police. Because unfortunately, violence is a part of the job. There are times where we've often happened to condemn some violence, and we're defending others' lives. And so, that statement saying that condemning police violence means, is my opinion, sounds like we were condemning all police.
No.
I would be more comfortable with the language saying condemning police brutality and/or excessive force. I don't, I don't think
Oh, okay, excessive force and brutality?
Does not all police officers, uh, abuse their power. I think the language has, definitely has to be very specific, so I would only ask that to come back and have that changed. I should add to that, that what I hate really what has happened is I mean, lack of a better word, but just what I, what has happened I, 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 I really think, we hear stories and stories, but again, the broad culture here, the broad race and excessive force. We, being a, 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 a last team on the table, I'm not complying with the authority. They have to take matters into their own hands, rightfully, of course. And that's, again, the, the, brown, black, white, those are the things that, well, well, we talked about, the three real, those are the three colors. It's, so, I agree, uh, there are protests, but there is a point where it has to be at a moment's notice that they could protect themselves the, the, the public. But what is excessive, but Ken, if I'm not complying? Well, take, we gotta, it's the control, so how do we justify or, or be able to limit what excessive force is? That's, that's the question, I'm not just agreeing with you, but where's the limit? I don't know, that's what I'm asking. Well, but, um, let's just look at different situations that we'll see in the past country. Uh, a suspect that pulls out a weapon and an officer detaches his body,
That's not what we're talking about here.
Or whatever.
That's not their job. This is not their job right now to be talking about disseminating each criminal action.
A person that's been in custody for well over nine minutes, ten minutes, whatever the time was. In my view, is excessive, that's excessive force. And that's my, I agree, definitely. Yeah, and that's why I think the language should be very specific. Not condemning all police. Not all police officers abuse their power. But there are officers, that's, that's real. There are police officers that abuse their power. That's why I feel the language is clear. The message needs to be clear. To the public of what we're declaring.
So, please go have a share on the line, um, I'm not sure if this is the place where, uh, they get that.
Madison.
But I think, what is the definition under the Sheriff's Guide, right, of racist force or not? Right, they're the ones that are doing the training, they're the ones that, um, going to the
They don't get very good training.
Today, right, um,
I would consider a lot of different things.
Um, in the eyes of law enforcement.
Hi, I'm back on the line, can you hear me? Yes, I can. Okay, so, um, the definition, uh, of reasonable force that, uh, police officers, um, abide by is set forth in the court case of Graham versus Connor. And Graham versus Connor essentially says that, um, the, the, um, force should be looked at in a measure of what a reasonable officer put in the same situation would, uh, necessitate, the amount of force that would be necessitated position. Um, so, there is case law on the definition of it, there is also, um, a department policy, which our department policy essentially mirrors Graham versus Connor and the definition of, uh, it's called the Reasonable Police Officer Standard.
Awesome, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for that non-answer.
Um, Councilmember Evans, I wanna take a moment to answer some of the other Councilmembers' questions or concerns, because again, I know that there's something that you brought forward, and I know trying to be portrayed, uh, this is trying to be delivered, um, and I think that as counsel, we're all in support of the message they're trying to um, but is there anything, and we're maybe, um, sharing, you know, clarity to some of the other Councilmembers' questions? Or feedback before we comment?
Stop it, Madison, that's enough.
I have full support of Mayor Potemper Hernandez's, um, modification to, I believe that's, uh, one
Excuse me, you guys, I don't know, my dog is like, having a fit, I'll be back. After like nine o'clock, she starts to cry.
That I, I read that as clearly, well, again, clearly, and, and Councilman Camargo made a very, um, good point in that we, that was clearly, and to my, may not be correct, but I personally, so, uh, when, when it says condensed police violence, I don't think that police acting in, um, their capacity, like, like whoever, I don't remember which one of these brought up the point of, I think it was, uh, Mayor Potemper Hernandez. Someone pulled a gun on a police officer and they shoot him? That's not violence, that's doing their job. So, eh, violence, I, I don't, I don't see a police officer doing their job as long as they're within the confines of their job as being violent. It's when they step outside of that, that they fall into the violent category. But I, I am one hundred percent okay with bringing it back with the language that Councilor, uh, Mayor Potemper Hernandez suggested with the police brutality, um, if that's what we wanna do. I am not okay with watering down the message, because like the mayor just said, there is a clear message that's being here, and it's not only in our city, the county has enacted this, and, and cities and counties across the nation have enacted very similar, um, ordinance, I'm sorry, resolutions that have very similar verbiage. And so, the message needs to be clear, and the message needs to be the same. And when you start changing small, that seem small to you, but are very big to the community that it's affecting, is watering down the message to make you feel comfortable. And that, that, that shouldn't be the way that we look at something like this, when we're talking about racism. It's not about making the people that are not subjected to racism feel comfortable. If we were uncomfortable, then it wouldn't be an issue. What this is, is we need to, we need to look at why this makes us uncomfortable, why saying Black Lives Matter makes us uncomfortable? And, and take that as a teaching moment. And to look at yourself, looking at yourself and do some research, and, and read some books on why that makes you feel uncomfortable. Why you don't agree with that word, it's okay to say all lives matter, it's okay to say blue lives matter. So, when we say Black Lives Matter, it becomes an issue. And that's something that we need to take into account and stewardly, and to see, if this is a movement, and this is a group that's being oppressed at the moment, why do we take away from that? Nobody, in, in any, in anybody that I've ever talked to that, that supports the Black Lives Matter statement, so it's be clear that there's a difference between the statement, when we're talking about Black Lives Matter, I'm talking about my life, I'm talking about my starting life. I'm not talking about the organization, so let's make sure that we're clear on the difference between the two. And, and we need to understand that, that right now, Black Lives are the ones that are being attacked. And we talk about the, the bringing the police, and, yeah. And, and I appreciate, you know, Catherine Shelley, I think she's phenomenal. But to go to the people that we're trying to condemn and ask them, do you think the verbiage should be? Makes absolutely no sense to me, because we're, what we're seeing repeatedly is, I'm, I'm seeing the case law that she created is why so many officers do not get indicted. Is why just today, all of the officers involved in the Breonna Taylor, um, case were let off, except for the one that shot through the wall and could have possibly hurt someone else, but didn't, because he's being charged. So, so let's talk about how that wall is more valuable than her life. Let's, let's bring up what Mayor Potemper Hernandez brought up in George Floyd, and his meeting, uh, an officer's meeting, and placed on his neck for eight minutes. And the fact that three other officers stood around and did nothing. So, you, what, did they personally do it? No. But they stood there and watched, they didn't help him. So, it, 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 it is very personal, and it is very much so centered around one group of people. Because that group of people are the ones that need the help right now. And just like we're standing up for the, the people that need support with COVID and PPE stuff, because of the seniors and the kids, and whoever else are the, the most vulnerable, why can't we stand up for Black people? Why can't we say that we realize that the Black folks in Adelanto are more subject, subjected, more, more possible that they are going to be subject of police brutality? Again, I was the other word that Mayor Potemper Hernandez used, thank you, um, in everyday life. They're the ones that have to, you know, that are being followed around the story. They're the ones that have to worry about, it can go to the senior center, because it's a kick cafe club with K's instead of proceeds. That's what we're talking about here. And, and I think that, that we need to remember, like we said before, we are here to support and to protect our residents. And right now, the residents that need the support of this resolution are the Black community. So, um, you know, that, that's, I, I get, I'm fully in support of changing the verbiage on Section One B to reflect what Mayor Potemper Hernandez suggested. I, I, I don't agree with watering down, um, and making folks comfortable because they wanna read it as only Black Lives Matter. That's not what we're saying, that's not what anybody's saying. What we're saying is Black Lives Matter too. And until they do, all lives cannot matter, we all, the, the statement, all lives matter, is not factual. Thank you.
All right, thanks for that, I'm gonna go ahead and open up public commentary at nine thirty-two.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, we did receive one High Desert Intersections Collaborative. And I just wanted to let you guys know that, and it will be made part of the minutes. And we also have three public comments so far, just a reminder, push star three if you wish to comment on this item. First one, six one nine five three four.
Hi, this is, go ahead. Hi, uh, this is Yedda Fatsarine, and I'm actually the one that submitted the, the email comment. Uh, I just wanna make sure I read it, read it for you all. Uh, I am speaking on behalf of this collaborative, I'm just gonna read straight through versus just how I normally speak to you all. Um, so, dear Honorable Mayor and City Council, we submit this comment in support of adopting a resolution uh, as racism is a public health issue, over the past two years, this collaborative has worked to address health disparities throughout the High Desert region with the overall goal of advancing health equity amongst our residents. Through the partnership of local nonprofits, community residents, grassroots-led coalitions, both city and county leaders, we have identified three key issues that create health disparities in our region, housing, economic development, and access to quality education. Our goal is to work together to have a collective impact uh, on our region and move the needle on the quality of life of our residents and increase life expectancy in the most impoverished and disadvantaged. Over the last year, however, the COVID-19 pandemic has shifted the way that we do our work. Being entities of this health crisis and now economic crisis, it's up mixed and it is obvious that people of color have disproportionately been impacted both of life and economically. We un, we understand that this disproportionality did not happen in a vacuum, but it is a result of years of legal segregation and redlining that created inequitable opportunities for people of color. It is due to this that we recognize that we, if we are truly to move the needle on health equity so that all, our High Desert residents have a better quality of life, we must focus our efforts on those who have been hit the hardest. In looking at, uh, in looking at Adelanto specifically, we are hit hard by how inequities look like every day for the, for the average person. This city, who is made up of amazing people, and the majority of which are people of color, looking at some track data, forty-seven, six, forty-seven point six percent are considered Hispanic, twenty point three percent are considered African-American or Black American. It is currently exerting the third highest unemployment rate in our county for one thousand eight hundred people without jobs at present time, this is according to two one one data. We have also seen a high increase in the need for housing and utility assistance, all of which are key factors to high quality of life and overall health outcome. All this to say that this is a prime example of how inequity actually look like on the ground, and why it's so important to focus on a very specific population that's hurting in the face our Black brothers and sisters. We commend you for joining the growing list of US cities who have declared racism as a public health issue. We know that this declaration is the first step in addressing systematic inequality, and we look forward to working with you in any way that we can help to improve the quality of life of our High Desert residents in solidarity with this collaborative, and I have a list of the members who signed on. Providence St. Joseph Health, uh, Possibility Project, Department of Behavioral Health, River Valley Rescue Mission, I am not
Nick Coller, seven six zero two one seven.
That's us, how do we follow that? Hi, my name is Diana, and I am a resident of Adelanto. I just have to say, the caller before me, I commend her, and I she's amazing. Anyways, I would also like to say, um, that I stand with Councilwoman Evans saying Black Lives Matter, and that they do. And we can't say all lives matter if we don't focus on the ones in our cities and our communities that have to depend on us. Um, we still haven't even, whatever happened to Darrell Allen? You know, he was shot in a laundry room on Pointiana in Adelanto. There are two other people that have been shot, and neither of their um, investigations have ever happened into those officers to see why we had those acts happen the way that they did. Um, it scars our community when we have these violent acts against our residents. And, you know, or excessive force, or whatever you wanna call it, it still damages the children's minds, and it still damages our minds. These violent actions cause PTSD in people. And it creates a distrust, we really need to get back to, um, some kind of some kind of recognition of what is happening and realize that we can't be placated anymore. We can't just say, oh, all lives matter, because at that point, we could just say, oh, all of Adelanto matters. And, um, you know, we're not gonna worry about what's happening over in the old with the trash and all of those things, because all of Adelanto matters, so, you know, those roads, well, you know, all of Adelanto matters. Well, yes, it does, but we have roads in Adelanto that are not being fixed. We have other things, so we need to understand that if you're uncomfortable with Black Lives Matter, I'm sorry about that, but we have to really start to put it in words and put it on paper and say to our residents that they matter. People of color matter in our city. And to just kind of make a blanket, all lives matter, that's actually really offensive. It's offensive to me, I'm fighting every day for the people in G O, you know, prisons. They can't, they don't have phones to call the city council, but at the city council meeting, when sixty lawyers stood up for those people, they were told that they weren't Adelanto residents. And that, you know, they wanted to hear from the Adelanto residents. Well, they're in cages and they can't call you. So, we need to start understanding, people of color matter here. They don't have a voice. And we need to start really leaning in and listening to our residents. People of color, Black Lives Matter, and it should be on paper. Thank you so much.
Your line has been reviewed.
Caller nine oh nine, six three three, go ahead.
Hello, this is Tracy Hernandez again, um, the country, local and state leaders are declaring racism a public health crisis or an emergency.
You can join the meeting after that.
Three cities within California
You will never be connected to the meeting.
And I'm proud that Adelanto will become, be, becoming another city to stand firm in racial equity. These declarations are an important first step in movement to advance racial equity. Racism affects where people live, where they go to school. Racism affects where people live, where they go to school, the quality of the air they breathe, their income and wealth, their access to food and healthcare, and so much more. We're declaring racism a public health crisis. This can help us define that there is a problem, and that the first part of trying to solve this problem is to identify that issue.
Thank you. Identification is important.
... to come up with an outline framework for including health outcomes within our community and addressing bias within the city, within our county, and within our state government. Uh, that council members, we have to not just pass the resolution, but provide the stance and act behind this resolution. It's going to require proactive action from all of you, and ultimately will make a difference in the lives of the people, is what leaders do about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, sixty-six three seven seven. Go ahead.
Oh, yes, it's Madutero Ellis again. I, uh, remember just a few weeks ago, some, uh, movie star saying, it's not Black Lives Matter, it's All Lives Matter. He says, I think they're right, race around in my car, and when I get pulled over by the police, they see that I'm a black man, and that I'm driving a fancy car, but they don't bother me because I'm popular. And also, I wanna go back to those three officers. One of the officers did complain. He did tell him, uh, to get his knee off the gentleman's back.
But he still died.
Was afraid to do or say anything more because he was ill.
No, Tracy didn't write that.
And, uh, I was a white policeman officer.
It was what the other lady said, but, oh, I forgot to put on there that, that I can't fi, find the resolution.
Other officers. And that poor young man just made on, uh, patrol debate, not only lost his job, but he's in jail.
I got an email, Brenda, right now, tell her that there's no resolution.
And that happens to a lot of officers. The majority of officers are outstanding people. You don't read the papers, how many lives they save, how many people they've taken to hospitals, how many officers, and we know that helped a woman have a baby in a police car. But you don't hear about things like that. You just hear about all the bad things, because that's what.
That's what we're dealing with right now. Like, I'm sorry, you can't uns, shoot Darrell. You can't unshoot him.
Immigration, immigration, so forth, and so on. Uh, the newspapers would be like three inches thick. I worked for Border Patrol, and I remember all these officers taking their time, either their personal time, to go out and help grandmothers find their grandchildren who have separated from them by the coyotes that brought them across. Uh, we hear about Black Lives Matter, but we don't hear about Hispanic life matters. There's a lot of Hispanics that, uh, they get hurt too, but because they're illegal, they.
That's not true either. Not every Hispanic person is illegal. I'm not sure where she gets that from.
At least one Supreme.
I'm a Latina, and I'm not illegal.
Point a finger on an officer. Uh, so they think it's the same thing here. All lives matter, and, uh.
I'm white passing, so usually they don't mess with me either. I don't know what she's getting at.
Authority figures.
But I watched my cousin who's get it. I watched.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Other people get it.
Next caller, seven six zero two two one. Go ahead.
How y'all doing, council? Excuse me. Right there. Uh, I just wanna say, I didn't know y'all, this is coming up. Uh, Black Lives Matter. I support the statement. Hey, that's behind the group. Black Lives Matter. I do wanna say, I think, I put my lips up against anybody on the council project. Cause my pops was born nineteen fourteen, my grandma was born eighteen seventy-two, that's five years after Civil War. That's five years into Reconstruction. My great-grandfather came off the Kitty Island, you know anything about the Kitty Islands off of South Carolina? That's the slave port where they dropped the slaves off. I get with me. That means I probably, my family probably been here long, anybody that ain't probably from, from a indigenous tribe. So, I can say, my people been here through this whole entire BS of the United States, and it's a crisis. Y'all can say, y'all can suss out that all police are not bad, but y'all can't suss out Black Lives Matter.
Right.
Right now, a lot, your fellow American, most of y'all claim y'all Christians. But yeah, y'all may know what the Christ said, lay down your life for your brother. Y'all can't do that. It's hard for you. Come on, what's so hard to say Black Lives Matter? I mean, any nationality after nineteen sixty-five from the Civil Rights Act that is in the United States from immigration came here, all of Dr. King, you know? Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five.
Lee is so smart, you guys.
That opened up immigration all the way. Y'all don't know that part right. Yeah. That came home. Guess what? Black people, when we get rights, everybody get rights. Most of y'all didn't even know. They just start putting it in the status of Mexican on these forms into what, nineteen seventy-two, nineteen seventy-four? Nixon said they was gonna use it as a scheme to separate the Black and Mexicans, so we're going against each other. Dig a little deep, bro. Come on, guys. It's not that hard to say Black Lives Matter. Right now, that's the ones we focusing on. If I set a fire to a house, y'all seen me, I can't hear y'all ass, they gonna stop at the house that ain't burning. That was the one that's burning. So, right now, we saying black people are burning, and we need to focus on them right now. Those that need the help. That's not that hard. Come on, we born up against a system that has pretty much damaged every country in the world. And then every country that almost grew, uh, per se have used the civil rights movement to use it. The non-binary movement, the wonderful, the king, haven't they? Fanning no rain? Just go on and on. Tell me you need the voice. Hard as she wants him. We can even go further than that. Y'all can't even say Black Lives Matter. That's very odd to me. I mean, I mean, it ain't that hard to say it, man. It's only a couple of words. Y'all can say the blue lives matter, but it's disrespecting the flag. You're supposed to be no other color, but red, white, and blue. Talking about you can't wear a mask, but you go with no shirt, no service, but you gotta probably put on a mask. Oh, man, y'all be saying, crazy as hell. Even some of y'all that run for office, I ain't gonna wear a mask, but I'm running for office. You following Trump? He lied to your ass. You still following? That was anybody go, you touch the head off this mic, boy, you made me sick tonight. Get off the chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Next speaker, six three zero nine six five.
To the council, Claude Crumley, citizen.
No. Biotech, HD biotech.
Racism. A nice general condemnation of any kind of racism, because it was across the board, okay? Police abuse of power. Only over into the violence. So, we condemn abusive power. Really, the verbiage changes, people. And for those of you out there within Adelanto, you got some little short memories, people. There was a shootout yesterday morning at Cactus and three ninety-five, and then we're gonna sit here and worry about whether it's Black Lives, White Lives? I don't care whose life it was. A shootout in a public damn parking lot.
That's not the first time.
I don't care if his white, blue, purple, green, doesn't matter.
And here you go. He doesn't care.
When they leave your custody and then die in your custody, that is abuse. Thank you.
Stop it.
There, that's all I have.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and ask the council, Councilwoman Evans.
Um, I have nothing more to say. All right, thank you.
Sorry you're going through this, Stevanna. Black Lives Do Matter. And I'm wearing a mask wherever I go.
Yeah, I've listened to these comments, and believe when I say I'm not uncomfortable, I'm not afraid to say Black Lives Matter. Not at all.
But.
Racism. Have to say, it's far the door. I don't boast about the situation, because I don't care if my life, if my life experiences very, very rare.
Is he gonna have a kid?
Once or twice through all these years. Someone, you know, only talk about racism, believe me, it's black, town, life. And that's all the message that I myself is trying to get across. Life experience. I can show you take it to a city, if you're brown, bald, and sitting in the passenger seat, because I've been pulled over, so should we put a resolution because I was, um, discriminated against?
Yeah, actually, you should take that experience and teach us and make a resolution to keep it from happening to any of your people.
Yeah, you want me to hear it? But, you know, I.
That's what I think.
I, 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 I need to take it further than that, but the common work, yeah, but this man, the percentage of people who are brown, bald, and a passenger seat, they're, you know, I was offended. They apologized, but they, they appreciate when they got to that point. We talked about Black. I'm just, married that are Black. I own compadre, but compadre meaning in English, so I'm the father, the ground, the, the godfather of the started Black. It does matter to me. Black Lives Matter to me. How many times have I sat there in front of my friend that's Black, in, in confrontation to stand in front of it because I'm protecting that, 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 that figure of.
Then why can't they put it on paper? I just don't understand.
Because we wanna make this a one race. I'm sorry.
Make it about all people of color then. I don't know, but we need to understand that Black Lives Do Matter and why we can't say it, or put it, Black Lives and people of color.
The way to put that dish out on your table, and that's, I mean, if you're brown, but if you're not from a, a certain, a, 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 um, territory, that's the way they look at you. You can be brown, you can be black, you can be white, and they don't treat you the same way as if you're from this area of South America.
We're not in South America, though. We're in America, in the United States.
And then we're talking about.
Sorry.
It's about our residents. You're right, it's our residents, we're in the square miles of fifty-five, because this what the resolution is, fifty-five square miles. I don't care what ever color you are. If somebody's offending you, believe it, and I have, and I will, and I will still do it, stand up for them.
He doesn't stand up for the people of color in GEO. I don't know what to tell you guys.
You're not saying all Black? Only Black Lives Matter. No, all culture, all races matter. And we're talking about our city, and let's just go ahead, let's just wait for the staff to come out, and we'll bullet point it in that category, even Black, Hispanic, white, Asian, other. You are our residents. Now, that's what the resolution is. Our residents here in Adelanto are a district, and that's for support. And again, as I, I, I share it, Councilwoman Evans, I feel it, because I've experienced it. Just because I've experienced it doesn't mean that that's the only life that's gonna Because if that's a case clean, I would like this to be brought to our attention or, or as a resolution for the next reading, for Hispanic, for Hispanics. Two weeks later, people have met, I wanted to be for white, we get Asian, then there's others, please. No. Oh, our lives here within Adelanto. Well, we're gonna make it, hit our residents, and that's how important it is, then let's just go ahead and bullet point our cultures. And I've never felt this way. I'm offended now. So, does white, brown skin not important? And I know what's, what's been out in the media, and I'm saying media not, that they're lying, just because that's how we read, we hear on the radio, here, we hear, we see it on the news. And, you know, it, 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 it's like, this black gentleman, this black gentleman. But there's also the brown, brown lives that have been lost, the white lives that have been lost. So, that's, I just, we're, I'm coming to that, that perspective. If I'm not saying that it's Black, Black Lives Matter, because it does. Believe me, of the fact that what, what, what somebody looks like, a, a black person a certain way, wearing a certain area, that's my compadre. No, this ain't happening right now. So, that's all, I, I, I would really like to come back with this, and this resolution, I think it's very important. I thank Councilwoman Evans for bringing it out for awareness, but of all, of all races, I'm sorry. I just gave you three examples, the Black, the Brown, and the White. And I don't think one, one, one race is more important than the other. This resolution, there's no way. That's all.
Right, I'm tired too. I don't understand what Ed is trying to say.
Wow, this is, um, heavy evening, isn't it? In my heart, I love everyone, and you know that. I don't care what.
KKK lady.
Who they are, what color they are, but really sad.
KKK.
Or color, or white, or black, or whatever. Talks about racism there, because we're hard considering of what they're, they look like. And I'm gonna always go back to the blind people. Uh, the California Council of Blind, I said this before, maybe in my Facebook, that they see better than we do, because they don't see color. They hear who you are from, how you speak, and they know who you are and how you are by listening to you. And I often think, myself, how much better they can see than we can, because we tend to judge others by maybe where they came from, or their language, or something like that. In my heart of hearts, all these years, I've been in the jails and prisons, I love everybody. I don't care what they've done, or how they've done it, it's none of my business. My job is to love them, and to care for them, like the Lord, the Lord would. And, um.
We didn't hear that when she was talking about GEO.
Black, white, all of them, I love whoever.
We did not hear that when she was talking about GEO.
Something, we gotta stop to, no one is more important than the other. And these kids are getting shot.
She didn't push for any investigations on the three different people that were shot.
How much they're loved.
By the sheriffs.
My heart. To see these young kids get shot up, you know, that, this stuff has to stop, guys. I do hear your heart. I do hear your heart, uh, Evans, I hear your heart.
But she's gonna break it anyway.
Suffer a lot, told a lot of other people. And this all has to stop. We need to start loving each other and caring for each other, and stop making a division.
So, she's gonna vote no? They're all gonna do whatever they're gonna do?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanna thank Councilwoman Evans for bringing us up, you know, the issue to life. Um, again, for me, um, around the issue of the verbiage of encompassing all police, I do not agree with watering down. Uh, I agree with Councilwoman Evans on Black Lives Matter, and we need to stand firm on that statement. And, and, and let's just, let's just speak, I'm gonna speak to the heart and the mouth of you all, because that's the person I am. So, we're all gonna sit here, turn a blind eye, and pretend that racism does not exist in this country, especially racism towards Black people, and you're just a blind that doesn't want. And we're gonna sit here and say that Black people are treated no differently to anyone else? You're blind to this. And the reason this statement and many other jurisdictions have gone.
And the reason this statement and many other jurisdictions have gone with the same, the black lives matter, is because if we don't start tackling this issue, it's gonna be seen for brown folks, it's gonna be seen for Asian folks, it's gonna be seen for...
We're already having issues. The brown folks are all locked up at GEO.
And I would urge Councilwoman Evans, and stand up for little brown children, blocking cases. Why can't we stand up for black?
Thank you. And also the people in GEO. Let's stand up for them too.
Black lives do matter. They matter to me. I thought I had.
Hi, Ms. Michelle. It's nice to see you here. I'm a little bit tired, so...
Three points, I thought, but, uh...
I was just mad. I'm like, you gotta put it on paper.
I love how Lee said, um, that if we cannot send together support, um, uh, the culture, excuse me, that is, that is, that's down, you know, um, that we're not doing our job, so, you know, we can break three points. Thank you for your support, Lee and, and, and Claude. Um, Councilwoman Evans, I have a question.
Don't say anybody else's name, bro, right?
Well, certainly agree with the message chat, what it is that we're trying to move forward and, and, just hearing, um, some of, you know, our... With it, and, 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 and just in your opinion, right? Because again, no means to dilute the message. I said something in regards to, um, uh, what was the verbiage? Councilwoman Evans, you can read yourself. Claude was speaking, he was talking about, so...
Systematic racism.
Systematic racism.
Systemic, systemic.
Diluting the message if we were to include the definition of systematic racism in regards to supporting this matter movement? Do you feel that would be diluting the message?
Madison, why you gotta cry at me all the time?
Um, it definitely would not dilute the message, and we definitely could add, um, a bullet point, you know, add, add, add another, add another section there. I would be okay with adding a section, and I'm, I'm sorry, I closed out of my, um, other resolution. Um... I feel like, and only correcting, we do, okay, I'm sorry, we do, that's what I thought, we do talk about systematic racism, um, in section two B. And, and that's where we talk about dismantling systematic racism, so that's already addressed in the resolution.
Oh, whatever, I was thinking, I was thinking, part two, uh...
You're saying, change the word, change, change it from saying black lives matter to we want to denounce systematic racism?
No, because the opinion we changed the word, we don't deny it.
All that.
Right? That, that's not what we're trying to do. Um... I know me, that, do, do, I wanted to dilute the message, uh, what this is doing, you know what I mean? Um, and, and, and the meaning, the, the, the movement behind is what I... Um, if, again, it's gonna matter if they dilute the message in no means, but, um, just hearing the things that Lee and Claude were saying, um, let me just re-read, but, I think, it's there, so that's all that matters. Um...
Yeah, I promise, right here on section two D, it says, "Support policies at the local, city, and federal level aimed at improving public health and dismantling systematic racism." So there's your encompassing. You want to encompass everybody, that is, that's just, we're, we're taking this one, um, section, subsection, right? One C, and pretending like it's, it's the whole resolution. We're, we're reading the whole rest of it. And that, that's part of the problem, and that's what hap, I'm sorry, go ahead there, I will stop.
No, because I will add a question, because I understand, I, I understand the delivery of what it is that you're asking in regards to this, right? And the, 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 the whole picture of, of what this is, um, so, that, that's, that was just my only question. Um, I appreciate, like, Lee and from Claude in regards to be there and so, um...
What does that mean?
Um, I agree with Mayor Prokhorov, it's a mission of, of, of language, and, uh, yeah, that's, you know, I'll go ahead and, and, there, I mean, there, I'll go ahead.
I'm sorry, if I could, I thought I made clear, as an activist, for social justice, turned politician, no true activist that is pushing the Black Lives Matter movement believes only black lives matter.
Thank you. Thank you.
Only out of our heads. And I'm telling you, and I hope that the people that, you know, I, I have befriended, or that have known me, know that I will, will guide you just to try to get your support. But nowhere ever are we saying, oh, only black lives matter. Certainly addressing the problem right now. And I, I always go back to one of my mentors, Jane Elliott, and she, she's done this experiment, I, I think she started probably before I was born, if you watch the videos with the Great Order Night, nineteen eighty-four, um, where she's in a, in a college auditorium, full of white kids, white students, so they're not kids, they're in college, right? And she asked them, if any of you would be okay being treated like a black person in America, stand up. And not one of them did, which means we, they understood that there is an injustice there. They don't want to be treated like a black person. So it shows the problem, and she continues to do this experiment to this day, so it's not like it's outdated. You would think by now folks would just stand up to prove her wrong, but they still don't, because the, the truth is... No one wants to be treated like a black person in America. No one wants to live that life. No one wants to be, you know, I, I, and please don't take me wrong, I am proud to be a mother of three amazing black boys, but every day I have to worry about their lives. When they want to walk to the park, and we live in a, a defect part of town, we've lived on this, you know, I, I, I live less than a mile from the house I grew up in. And never have we had a problem. But when they ask me to walk to the park, or they ask if they can go to my mom's house, and I have to, I, I, in all honesty, just because of that, I told my eight-year-old, yes, all right, you're fine. And before he got to the corner with my shoe, I was pulling out of the driveway, because I had to rethink the fact that what could happen to my four-year-old girl's life? And what about my sixteen-year-old, who looks like a twenty-four-year-old? What about him? No, nobody wants that experience. So we have to understand and acknowledge that that's a situation that not all races are having to deal with. And right now, the ones that are dealing with it the most is the black community. To me, right, what was he, eight, running in the park? Cop pulled up in less than three seconds, shot him dead. Okay? That's a problem. So with that said, I, I'm gonna go ahead and set motion that with the modifications, that's it, Mayor Prokhorov Hernandez, where we, um, change the verbiage from violence in section one, um, part B, where we have condemned police violence, if we can modify that to condemn police brutality and excessive force, with only that modification, I set motion to approve this resolution. All right, was that a second from Mayor Vance?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Camargo.
Yeah, we'll have to say it off, because it was special one, to be honest, all colors matter.
Oh, wow. No wonder he didn't vote.
I hope that we come with a resolution. Well...
Maybe next time you'll vote on GEO.
Evan?
Yes.
Councilmember Canet? I'd like to see it rewritten before I vote. All right, the motion is that it's going to be rewritten with the section B to reduce brutality and force, uh, but it's the only change. Is that the wording then that's gonna be used? Yes. Okay. And the, the, all the other languages changing, okay, go ahead, Lloyd.
The, the language in, uh, what I heard for B is, um, police brutality and excessive...
Correct, thank you, Lloyd. I'm sorry, other language will stay the same. Though there is succinctly, I can't speak, I'm sorry, hopefully next week I'll be able to speak better, succinctly, uh, that's in there, which brings in other cultures as well.
The motion...
That's what I'm asking, I guess, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I was, Lloyd, the, the motion that's on, the motion that's on the floor is only to edit to section one B. No other changes. That's the motion that's on the floor.
No, I know, but I was asking, is that percentage still in there, meaning other, uh, nationalities as well? It's still gonna read black lives do matter. That will still be in the resolution. Yeah, I understand that, I understand that, but is that other statement in there about succinctly? Excuse me, for not seeing your call, but I can't speak right, right now.
I think what Councilwoman Canet is trying to clarify is whether the systemic racism is still included in the resolution.
Thank you, thank you for saying that, thank you. Yes, in section two B. So that is still there. Yeah, that is okay. Okay, yes. Thank you. Mayor Prokhorov Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Vance?
Yes.
Here he is, got to vote twice. Don't vote twice, it's a felony. And he was on the dais, so it's not a felony for him. I'm just saying.
The passing of that resolution, can I, um, ask that we agree to give direction for staff to set a workshop to start, um, getting input from the residents on how we want to take action on, on this resolution, so that it's not just words that we're actually putting action behind.
Yay, action!
Yeah.
Your Honor? Yep, we can bring that item back for discussion, as it's, it's not agendaised, uh, Lloyd, correct me if I'm wrong, we're just trying to do it improperly.
Uh, Lloyd, uh, I would recommend, uh, not voting, but, uh, it's...
So we can direction to set a date for workshop, to put action to the resolution.
Workshop, um, how about, uh, uh, having the city manager and me report back to council about, uh, the, 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 the idea of a workshop, rather than having to actually count?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I, if I came off as if I wanted you to give me a date right now. I was just giving you direction that we set date for, or workshop.
It, it sounds like direction and staff to me, I think it can be done. So noted.
Yay, black lives matter.
Items to move on to, the calendar, item five.
Thank you. Um, okay, so I was reviewing the, the report, both the written report and the, um, data sheet, and according to the written report, but I guess most of my questions are, are all of them really will be addressed to Dave and/or the cannabis compliance. Well, I guess that, you know, right, whoever can stand here, but according to the report, um, you said there are fifty active cannabis operations in the city, with forty-five of them having multiple licenses, um, and that's, that's paraphrasing, that's not your, that's your pitch. So I only count eleven, well, first, let's start with first, I only have, I only count forty-eight licenses on this sheet. And then of those forty-eight, only eleven of them are sure to have multiple licenses. So my question is, where are the other thirty-three companies, or why are they not displayed as having multiple licenses?
So this is Dave, uh, if I may answer. So what we gave you is a list of active cannabis permits. Some of these businesses have more than one permit, but they're not active. As an example, some have, uh, marijuana manufacturing, uh, and cultivation and distribution. Um, and right now, they're only doing cultivation, and they're not having manufacturing or distribution. Some have distribution and extraction, and they're only doing extraction right now. So the only ones we gave you are the ones that are active. So some of these have more than one permit, but those permits are not active. Some have three permits, but all, they're only, and, but all, all three are operations, and some only have one of those permits that were permitted and approved by the planning commission, and, and currently, they're only growing or cultivating. So all of their permits that have been approved are not active and in operation.
So how long does it, and, and, and this is not my list of questions, this is a new question, so you're giving some new information, how long can a permit be inactive before, like, it's continued to use, revoked? What the proper word would be for that, right? You can, I can get a permit, what did you, I'm sorry, over there, revoked?
I would say revoked, yeah.
Yeah, so I can, I can request a permit.
It's just voided. It's not rejected, it's, it's voided.
Well, okay, so it depends. So most of these are just the CUP, the conditional use, uh, process, uh, or condition use permit. Uh, those are technically good for two years, but they can also get an extension for two years, or a year, it depends how the conditions of approval were written, um, and approved by the planning committee. In addition to that, some of them might have become an aid for everything, aid for all the permits, aid for all the billing permits, but they just activate them either at the state level, or at the city level, or at school. But they pay for them, but they're not in operation. Uh, so there's a combination of all kinds of things going on here, um, so depends on when the permit was issued, what the conditions of approval say, but typically, um, they can come in and apply for an extension, and definitely do that extension to see if it's, if it's present. If it's not present, for whatever reason it might be, they might have not paid their license fee for the year, or the old back licenses, or their taxes, all kinds of issues for might have expired, and then if that expires, we require them to come back in, submit a new CUP application or modification to the CUP, so it's very complicated. There's not just one general answer.
Conditional use permits should not be allowed until later, until they're ready to open doors.
Cool, cool. All right, so, um, or Council, 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 if I can do that down real quick before I forget?
No, it's my time, but you need to write your questions down there. I'm just kidding, go ahead.
Well, sorry, Jane, I think you're correct, but that three are cannabis ordinance, because I do believe it specifies in the ordinance one year. For example, you don't have your dispensary up within one year, it's revoked. I could be wrong, but basically, the cannabis ordinance.
If I may try to answer that, yeah, there's, as I indicated in the fact before, there have been twenty-five, uh, different ordinances or modifications that have been passed by the city. Um, some have to do with dispensary, some have to do with cultivation, some have to do with medical, um, some have to do with distribution, and recently, we talked about, uh, one about... Um, some have to do with distribution, and recently we talked about, uh, one about taxes. And so they're all slightly different, all that wording's being cleaned up, uh, by the city clerk's office. Um, and so once all that's cleaned up, and, and Brenda might be able to speak on that better than I can. But, yeah, some of the original, uh, distribution permits allowed them one year to apply, and they needed to be in operation. And that's one of the reasons it's currently only two, or, uh, in operation. But the other ones for manufacturing, or cultivation, or extraction, the CUP process granted them two years.
Not sure, that's, that's our response, I don't think we bring it up.
You're good coach.
Uh, but, uh, it's just, uh, read that one, this is read that one, then that's ordinance, I there's so many, like you said, uh, Mr. Brendan, but the very last one, that portion that never changed.
I, I think you guys are probably talking about ordinance five eighty-eight, which was the last one that tried to combine all of the ordinances.
And it just-
Brenda, city clerk. Um, uh, Dave, uh, Mary, and, and I are all working on the resolutions, trying to make sure that the municipal health line is updated according to the ordinances that were passed. Uh, it appears that, uh, sometimes, I want to choose the ordinances, uh, and make it to the codifiers, making sure that was done. But I believe Mary is the one who is working on, um, those and making sure that, uh, they're, uh, they're lining up with each other and, uh, going to be, um, getting a new one out, uh, making, uh, everything make that makes sense.
Make sense, the council member?
Yeah.
Yes, Dave, yes, Dave, yes, Dave, yes. So Mary is, uh, uh, one of the planners. Thank you.
Am I good coach? Thank you, um, okay, so on the list, as, as I'm going down, there are a few, um, that are on there twice. And then there's also some that are simply like people's names, but I, according to the, the header, these are probably business names or DVA's, so are these people doing business as their name?
Okay, so this is Dave again, some are doing business as a company name, some are doing business as a specific name. Uh, so it's a combination of everything. Uh, some are doing business as a partnership.
Okay. I find it strange that you open a business and it's still like, I opened a business and I just call it Cmona Evans?
Right.
That's happening?
Well, yeah, so some of them, it, it, yeah, some of them submit their, their application, uh, through the state-
She wants to go to bed really bad.
With a specific name or a specific company. And it has to be consistent with the state and the city, so they have to carry that on through with their application.
That doesn't make it-
Okay, so, um-
The name of the company should be on there too.
If you want to incorporate your name, there will have to be a corporation, and, and your corporation is, your name is your corporation, that is very much-
Okay.
There it is.
There it is!
I've never seen that, like, I, I'm Cmona Evans doing business as my business name, so I, I've never seen that ever, but okay, if that's a common thing, then it's a common thing. Um, so, um, there's a company listed twice, and that is the Sensa Equity Partners. Am I correct in, that was the, what Healy, Healy Biotech changed their name to, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't answer that one, I'm not sure.
Of course he can't answer it all of a sudden.
Making sure that I was on par, but I'm, I'm, I'm positive, I'm, I'm ninety-nine point nine-nine percent positive that they, that is the company. And so when I, I inquired about Healy Biotech a few weeks ago, um, the response is that they're not doing cannabis, they're only doing hemp, they're only manufacturing hemp products. But they have a total of seven licenses, with one of those license numbers being the exact same license number as the Russell Agnes, and I can't see it, my, my train is a little bit messed up there. Um, but one of their license numbers is the same, so I'm, I'm a little confused as to why they have active cannabis licenses? If they're only doing hemp, they're only manufacturing hemp? And then why is one of their license numbers the exact same license number as another business?
So that might be a typo, I'd have to check on that, but-
It's not a typo.
As far as the cannabis and the hemp, that, this is one that we, uh, responded to a few weeks ago. Um, yeah, that, um, one, we checked out, checked it out, and they had permit for cannabis, but they're not operating cannabis. They're only doing hemp.
Same difference.
And had a long discussion with the owner, and he, for whatever reason, uh, financial or whatever reason, he decided not to go with um, his active cannabis permit, instead he decided to utilize hemp.
We don't have hemp on the ordinances.
And then with, these licenses did not be active, and so then according to what you said earlier about these only being active businesses, why are they listed on the active list?
Yeah, that's correct, that one should be taken off.
Oh, just taken off, that's it.
Um, okay, so so you're saying there's probably a typo on their inactive permit? One, one of the seven of their inactive permits? Um, you're off the table, they shouldn't even be on it, so in my opinion, with all of the, um, inaccuracy, or at least those two, specific inaccuracies, um, it's hard for us to receive and file something that's not accurate. Um, I know-
Hemp isn't even ordinance, in the ordinances here.
Hearing and filing inaccurate information, what does that say?
Thank you.
We talked about, um, you know, criticizing past council for what they're doing and not wanting to be criticized moving forward. If we're putting on record documents that staff is admitting have typos and errors, um, I don't think it looks good on us, just in that. Now, um, when we had that, the conversation a few weeks ago, council meeting, um, some of the questions that were asked, i- i- to my recollection, to be brought back for i- in this report, was, um, there's, there's three that I, that I specifically remember that are missing out in the report, and that was that we asked for the, it's the number of inspections, or the inspection count and the date. We also asked for the total number of permits issued for all categories? And how many were under construction? And maybe I missed it, but I don't see any of the answers to those questions in this report? So we can, um, again, bring it back, I, I, in my opinion, and, and, you know, of course everyone will have their chances to talk, but I think the good poll report needs to be brought back with us with the answers to the questions that we asked. In addition to those three questions, or, and the corrections on, on your spreadsheet, in addition to those questions and the corrections, uh, I do have an additional question. Um, I also want to know who's doing what at each location, and what licenses they have. I, I'm under, I, it was brought to my attention, and I can't figure this, but with, um, four sixty facility, and I'm not talking specifically about that, but with the concept that I know what that building is supposed to be, that there are other facilities that are sub-recent space? So I would like to also see a list of everyone who's operating inside of a facility, and their licenses. So, um, in addition to the corrections to the spreadsheet, again, the three questions that were asked a few weeks ago, the inspection count and the date, so when are people going out and inspecting facilities, and what dates did those happen, how many times did they go out? The total number of permits issued for all categories? How many, and, and let's say, um, issued? And active, so we want to see the to- I want to see, speak for myself, I'm sorry, the total number of issued permits for each category? And also the total number of active permits for each category? And how many, um, facilities do we have under construction? And then again, the, the last question of who's working, uh, who's operating in what facilities, all occupants, and what licenses those people possess?
So some of that information is on the spreadsheet, if you notice, it, it talks about a TI or tenant's permit? It also mentions that some are under construction. However, if I all three remember correctly, the council did not provide, uh, provide staff direction to answer all those cor- all those questions? I could be incorrect. Um, and this report was not meant to, uh, try to answer all those questions, but rather than to give the council just a simple update of the active permit that staff, uh, had indicated in the fact report. But if it's the council's direction for, to, uh, also respond to, uh, and try to get all that information, uh, then, uh, staff will complete that for the council's direction, uh, however, I'd just like to point out that that is going to take a lot of staff time and a lot of effort to accumulate, uh, all that information.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying next meeting, but I, I do take issue, and I want to put on record, Lloyd, if, if I could, um, that now this is the second and maybe third time that the whole council has to agree to give direction when I ask a simple question, and it is asking for information to be provided to us? But yet no one had to, uh, we didn't have to get a staff, uh, consensus when Joy gave direction, um, on the, on the dumping issue. So I just want that to be noted, that it appears that it's, it's just me that has to have consensus on the whole council, when, when I'm asking for, I'm, I'm asking to give direction. Thank you.
Alright, um, my question is directly, probably mine, and, um, for Kathy and Jamie. Update numbers wise on revenue, uh, so far where we are here over here, um, if we can do, if you have it, um, I did a breakdown, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. But, we, we happen to have a rough estimate of what the full cannabis revenue was for eighteen, nineteen, no, we're currently in fiscal year nineteen twenty. So, uh, eighteen nineteen cannabis revenue, and then, and nineteen twenty, and where we currently are, where's cannabis revenue?
Kathy or Jamie, are you on the line? You are, push far three. Is that you Kathy or Jamie?
Uh, this is Jamie.
Alright, and then I have Kathy as well, you're both unmuted, thank you. Perfect, um, if I understand your question correctly, you're just looking for fiscal year totals for nineteen twenty, and we're at currently at twenty-one, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I do happen to have my spreadsheet, so it looks like in fiscal year nineteen, our total was four million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars? Um, let me remind you, half of that year did have a much higher tax rate at five percent for most of our grocery speeds. Tax payers-
Sorry, I did, see what the dog needs.
Florida, definitely one percent.
I think I found it, but I'm not sure.
Seven percent of our tax payers. Uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty, the total revenue was, uh, one million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is shy of two million dollars. Um, and then currently, um, the figures I have here are through August thirty-first, so it's what's going to be reflected in the August report there, um, in the agenda, but the total, uh, through that date is five hundred and ninety-four thousand, five, I'm sorry, five hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars? Um, just for those two months. So if, if we're projecting that forward, uh, not to account for any changes in the tax rate, we're looking to collect around, uh, three million dollars by the end of the fiscal year. Jamie, can you say the twenty-two thousand nineteen number again, I'm sorry? Sure, fiscal year twenty nineteen, uh, one million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eight. Thank you. You're welcome. Mary, did that answer your question, or do you have a follow-up?
Uh, yes, that's my question, thank you so much. What would be for you, uh, possibly, I know we do a mid-year review come January, um, would it be I know a big want from our constituents is to, um, hire more staff, with the conversations we've had today with code enforcement, um, enforcement, right, with legal dumping and, and other matters, would it be would it be too early to potentially make staffing modifications, um, and open up higher come a six-month analysis of what we've done revenue-wise, uh, with these adjustments, or, um, just trying to bring it, you know, hopefully everything moves in a, um, in a direction that is investing for the city with those items that we have on out of November, uh, but, you know, just to be steadily growing, um, would it be too early to potentially do some type of hiring, or um, or does that matter, or would it be necessary to chill when we?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Councilmember, for a former client's record. Um, so, um, there's various, uh, revenue screening that the city is monitoring, um, so obviously if, um, the cannabis revenue is coming in better than expected, or than we estimated? Um, we can look at, um, making budget adjustments in mid-year or anytime for that matter. Uh, but also the the result of measure R is going to be critical in, uh, a financial decision the city makes. So, um, the, the reason for that, how the, the budget gap is larger than, um, uh, unless, unless the cannabis business really, or industry really takes off. Right now, uh, the cannabis revenue, the city is not enough to close the budget deficit, so a, a combination of measure R, cannabis revenue, um, and other, um, revenue possibilities, um, have to be considered.
Of course, and that's also, I, 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 I'm getting more of a, I know you get monitored on a regular basis, you just see the money coming in, I know Derek is, uh, is involved in the process, and he does, uh, you know, um, the energy and everything that goes on with the team is great, and we're watching the process of things, um, Derek, thank you so much for all that you do. Uh, more likewise, everyone that's involved. Again, I'm just trying to, um, be ready for that day, right, that's what, that, you know, there's some important measures come November. Um, I wouldn't want to do anything prior to November, I'm thinking twice to do anything prior to November, but, you know, we could do something in January. Um, if you can just, you know, keep form on, you know, how close we're getting, obviously November is very, very important to, um, closing up the gap, but, you know, one of us definitely be able to implement, um, some, 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 I think, come November, come January, hopefully November, then June, so just item two, um, share with constituents how, how, what we're doing with the revenue collection of it, um, where did they were going, and, um, yeah, uh, just keeping in mind- Yeah, uh, just keeping in mind that we are looking to, one day, sooner rather than later, be able to bring some more relief to, to our staff on that city hall.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot to add, uh, yeah, staff monitors revenue on a daily basis. Um, and we have regular conversations with the city manager about revenue, and we do have conversations about. When, uh, revenues increase, about, um, improving staffing and things like that, so. Discussion at level are already taking place, and, um, you know, we're, we're looking forward to a time when we can start. Appreciate you. All right, so, uh.
Well, before we do that, Mayor, I guess, can I, um, ask for consensus from the council that the questions that I asked be answered? In a report?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not roll. So that three is left, and you need all five of us to, um, consent to that.
Are you asking for a vote, or what are you asking for?
I'm just asking for you, um, to get consensus that they put a report together answering the questions that I asked regarding the report given.
Well, we need that, of course.
This is Lloyd, uh, city attorney. If, uh, if staff hears a majority of council giving directions, that's all staff needs, don't need a vote. And, uh, you know, don't need to make it in any formal way, so three is a clear majority.
Your honor, your honor, and, uh, council members. Manager, oh, absolutely, we will, um, gather all that data and, uh, provide you with that as soon as possible, not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, so with that being said, I ask. But.
No.
I move. Um, Mayor, I don't know if it's going to be approved or brought back, or if you guys have.
Yeah. That's what I thought, that we're bringing it back.
Oh, that's right, that's correct.
Okay, we're not going to vote until the proper.
Yes, it was.
Or it's.
That, that, that was my understanding.
Okay. I just, we're going to bring it up, it makes a, a chance to try to win. Not a problem, we can, a little ways, nothing. Um, open up, okay, come, come.
All right, I have two public comments.
You raised your hand to act as a question.
My, please make it speak, it's the whole.
One public comment. Seven six zero two one seven.
Hi, my name is Diana, and I am a resident of Adelanto. I do have a lot to say about this, I've sent numerous emails about it. Um, cannabis revenue is really important, but what we really need to understand is that, um. We need to figure out where the companies are getting their approvals from the state from. Is it after their conditional use permit? Because that would be kind of putting the cart before the horse. They need to be applying for their state permits and licenses when they go to get their certificate of occupancy. Or when they get their actual business license from the city. So, um, for companies to have all of these licenses, it's called stacking. And I believe it's actually not, um, I think there's a law against it with the state, um, but that might have to be discovered. Um, you can't hold licenses that aren't, you know, producing or doing something. And, um, to apply for the licenses before you have a building or building and safety approval. Um, I'm not sure how that is helping the city. Or even helping the state and the revenue itself. If there are licenses that aren't producing, um, we need to check into that. Because it seems like. If they have only a year to be building and get their license, then why are they? Why are they getting them already? You know, seven licenses, I believe, is kind of excessive. Um, Eken Olem has a dozen licenses or so. Um, it's just, we need to maybe start to look at. Who is bringing forth the licenses? You know, the state keeps a list of all of these licenses, you can go to the Bureau of Cannabis Control website. And pull all of the licenses that are, um, on the state, that the state has listed for us. And I can tell you, um, through my own personal experience, that the state licenses and the city licenses, they don't match whatsoever. So, um, that might be something that we need to look into. Um, hemp is not regulated under our ordinances, and what are they doing with the THC quote-unquote waste? So that's a really interesting thing. Um, hemp should be regulated just like our cannabis is, I don't understand why it's not. And I don't know how a business can get a license without their certain thing being in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Your line has been muted.
Mayor, that's all I have.
You know what that means, that, uh, our next. Have our here's ten forty-eight, time voted. Member.
Okay, we're done.
Bye.
Thanks, people in WebEx, visit our website.
And they cut us off, so. I don't know, um. The whole hemp thing threw me off there, what is hemp all about? Also, I didn't get to the part where we have to have permits if you want to grow personal cannabis here in Adelanto. So, um, that is against the law, we shouldn't have to have a permit to grow cannabis, the state says we can grow it, and that's it. So, um, that needs to be struck from the record. And where are all of the admin workflows that we requested from our, uh, contract cannabis enforcement department? Um, it seems like they're focused on taxes and revenue when, um, we really need some enforcement. And I've sent so many emails about it, but we really haven't seen anything happen with that, so. Um, thanks for showing up tonight, ask me any questions. Let's talk about this, it's our city, and we need to take it back and have our voices heard. So, thanks so much for joining me, and we'll see you soon, bye.